Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call this regular meeting of the September 5th Board of Alderman to... everybody in? We'll call it to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We will follow that with prayer from Alderman Vaughn and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, I am a Father and I am a Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, by the way of the Holy Spirit. Again, Father God, here a few of your handmaids coming before you. The Lord will not hear from no shape, form, or fashion, nor outside, show to the world, but most of all, to give thanks and praises and glory and honor you because of who you are, for lying your angels to watch over us all day long as we have gone out to our daily occupations and routines. Now your Holy Spirit has directed us back to this appointed place to hammer the business and the fires of this city. I pray, God, that you will move on the heart of male spoor, Father God, and our budget chair, and, Father God, that you would bless us with a budget to be able to hammer and to support this city. I pray not that you won't stop there, that you will move on the heart of each and every one of these Aldermans and all your department heads and every city employee here, but most of all, Father God, bless the audience, that we be kind and be patient with us as we try to make these wise decisions. But we ask you now, Father God, that you just move us to the background and you will come to the foreground and direct our throats and direct our hearts and that every decision that we make, that it will glorify you. We give all praise and honor and glory to you, God, because of who you are and where you are. We ask you to forgive us of all our sins, that we will be able to stand before you and hammer these affairs. We thank you so much for being that great God, an almighty, all-wise, all-know, and all-powerful, seeing, hearing, understanding God, but most of all, we thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Fill this place with your Holy Spirit. Father in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Welcome, everyone. We appreciate you being here. We will go into approval of the official agenda, starting with the consent agenda. Do we have any changes that anyone wishes to make to the consent agenda?
Was anything changed from the work session to now?
Not that I'm familiar with. Everything that we discussed at the work session is shown to be highlighted. If there's anything that you want to add to the consent agenda or remove, now would be the opportunity. The claims docket was one of the things that we determined that we would not put on the agenda, nor the contract for engineering services for the airport, but Mr. Latimer has said that that master contract is fine, so if anyone wants to add that to the consent agenda.
Same move.
Okay. Anyone have a problem with adding the contract for the airport to the consent agenda? All right, we'll add that one to the consent.
Can we add the claims docket as well?
Any objection to the claims docket being added to consent?
I'll do it.
I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn?
I'll do it.
Okay, all right, so the claims docket will not be on the consent agenda. All right, any other items? Any other items? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
Same move.
A motion from Alderman Carver, second. Second from Alderman Sistrunk, any discussion? Am I all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved as agreed. Then we need the approval of the official agenda.
Approval.
Approval for Alderman Little, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The official agenda with the consent agenda is approved. Next would be the minutes of the board, which have been approved via consent. Moving to announcements. And I have several announcements to make, and let me first say that I... yesterday we had a... well, we had a water leak over the holiday weekend, and the water department was out there for an extended period of time, working on something that was totally unexpected on a holiday, on Labor Day, and so I wanted to say how much we appreciate the work that they did in getting it taken care of, had trouble finding parts and that sort of thing, but anyway, they did a very good job and put in those hours on Labor Day, so. And I have new employees to introduce, and I will find my list here underneath my... there we go, okay. We have firefighters to introduce. I'm going to start with Mr. Joseph Diaz. Joseph Diaz is originally from Livingston, New Jersey. He's a graduate of Claremont McKenna College with a bachelor's degree in economics. He worked for Bountiful Harvest Farms before joining the Starkville Fire Department. Joseph and his wife Julia are the parents of three children, Isaac, Dory, and Joshua, and during his spare time, Joseph enjoys a variety of interests, including music, birds, history, movies, literature, homesteading, and Chinese. And do you speak Chinese, Joseph?
Yes, ma'am.
Outstanding. Say something. There you go, okay. Thank you. Okay, and I'll introduce James Mask. James Mask is originally from Tupelo, but grew up in Lewisville, Mississippi. He is a graduate of Winston Academy. Before joining the Starkville Fire Department, James was a general laborer for Pearson Plumbing. James was also a volunteer firefighter with the Lewisville Fire Department. His interests include playing the guitar and studying history. Please join me in welcoming Joseph Diaz and James Mask to the city of Starkville. And I need to circle back, because for whatever reason, I make myself a note and I always forget it, and Alderman Vaughn did not yell at me tonight, so I'll just yell at myself for him. I need to read the consent agenda that we've approved, so that it's on the record, so if everyone will bear with me, I will do that now. First is consideration of the minutes of the July 18th, 2017, meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the July 28th, 2017, work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the August 1st, 2017, meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Then we have, under Mayor's Business, A, consideration of accepting the property at the intersection of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Highway 182, and North Jackson Street, Highway 389, from Rochambeau Starkville LLC. Consideration of a fair housing resolution for the Roundhouse Road Sewer Community Development Block Grant Project. Consideration of the approval of a minority and women-owned business resolution for the Roundhouse Road Sewer Community Development Block Grant Project. D is consideration of the approval of a Section 3 Plan Resolution for the Roundhouse Road Sewer Community Development Block Grant Project. E is consideration of the approval of a Code of Standards of Conduct Resolution for the Roundhouse Road Sewer Community Development Block Grant Project. F, consideration of calling for a public hearing on the repeal of the administrative hearing ordinance 2008-01, Code of Ordinances of the City of Starkville, Chapter 82, Article 6, Section 82-141 et sec in its entirety. Under Board Business, we have, A, acknowledgment of receipt of Appalachian Regional Commission ARC Grant Project Number MS-188956, in the amount of $269,055, with a city match of $67,264 for the paving of Mill Street. B, authorization to begin the procurement process for engineering professional services followed following the required ARC program guidelines, which includes Public Advertisement of Requests for Proposals, RFP, in a local newspaper of general circulation, establishing an RFP review committee, and MBE/WVE solicitation. C, consideration of accepting the quote from Prism Products in the amount of $4,733 to purchase 11 trash receptacles with funds coming from Keep Starkville Beautiful Funds. D is consideration of approval to purchase decorative signage and garbage receptacles at a cost not to exceed $15,500, with the funding for this project come from Ward 4 and Ward 5 discretionary funds, and authorization for the mayor to execute a proposal from the lowest quote supplier. E, consideration of appointing Libby Gerald, Libby Havilin, and Janet Mullins to the Keep Starkville Beautiful Committee with a three-year term to begin on September 6th, 2017. F, consideration of approval for Herman Peters, Daniel Havilin, and Emily Corbin to attend the Keep Mississippi Beautiful Annual Conference in Starkville on September 28th and 29th, with costs not to exceed $90. G, consideration of rescinding the previous board authorization to advertise and hire two firemen. H, consideration of calling for a public hearing to amend the smoking ordinance 2008-08, City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 82, Article 4, Code Section 82-91 et sec, to include electronic cigarettes in the definition of smoking products. I, consideration of approval for the travel for any Alderman interested in attending the 2017 Small Town Conference in Oxford, Mississippi, from October 25th, 2017 through October 26th, 2017, with advanced travel not to exceed $550 each. Under Department Business, we have Airport. Item 1, request approval to accept the Master Contract for Professional Airport Engineering Services 2017 from Clearwater Consultants, Inc., for George M. Bryan Field, Starkville, Mississippi. 2, request to approve Work Authorization Number 17-01 for the FAA 2017 AIP Project from Clearwater Consultants, Inc., for George M. Bryan Field, Starkville, Mississippi. Request to accept the... 3, request to accept the lowest-based bid for north boundary clearing and fencing and related improvements in the amount of $52,212.50, and Additive Alternative 1, west side clearing and fencing in the amount of $49,425 from Columbus Fence Company. 4, request to accept the best bid for runway information sign replacement modifications in the amount of $23,184 from ADV Safegate Americas LLC. 5, request to accept the lowest and best bid for installation of runway information sign replacements and modifications in the amount of $33,350 from Woodall Electric. Under Community Development Department, under Planning, A, consideration of Robert Camp for appointment for a four-year term ending August 31st, 2021, vacancy for Ward 4, Board of Adjustments and Appeals. B, consideration of approval of the special events request by Starkville High School for in-kind services for the 2017 Starkville High School Homecoming Parade to be held September 26th at 6:00 PM. C, consideration of approval of special events request by the Mystic Society of the Cowbellian Bulldogs to host the 2017 Mississippi Championship Steak Cookoff, October 7th, 2017, and have city participation with in-kind services pending proof of insurance 30 days prior to the event. D, consideration of approval of the special events request by Anita Lindsay-Bush of Mad Mothers Against Domestic Disputes to hold the 2017 Starkville Community Day, October 7th, 2017, and have city participation with in-kind services. E, consideration of approval to allow the United Way to have a banner at the Starkville Sportsplex to promote the Run United 5K Kickoff Event. F, consideration of approval to allow the Alzheimer's Association to have two banners to promote the Walk to End Alzheimer's Event that will be held on Saturday, September 9th. Under Finance and Administration, number 2, consideration of the approval of travel for Deputy Clerk LaShonda Wilson to the September 22nd through the 22nd, 2017 Deputy Clerk Training in Pearl, Mississippi, and Deputy Clerk Jamaica Smith to the Deputy Clerk Training in Oxford, Mississippi, October 11th through 13th, 2017, with advanced travel. 3, consideration of a lease agreement with Bank or South Equipment Finance Corporation for the lease purchase of a Ford F-150 to be used by the Starkville Fire Marshal's and to be paid from state rebate funds. Under Fire Department, number 1, we have a request authorization for Tony Claiborne to travel to Biloxi, Mississippi, to attend the 2017 Training Chiefs Conference, October 24th through 26th, 2017, at an approximate cost of $450. Number 2, request authorization to apply for a Homeland Security Grant for the approximate amount of $31,000 to be used to purchase a UVA drone, rope rescue equipment, and a flat-bottom boat with no cost to the city. Under Parks, we have consideration of the approval to use Magnolia Flooring and Company to remove and replace carpet in the lobby of the sportsplex with a lowest quote amount of $34,358.45 to be paid for with 2% funds. Under Personnel, we have consideration of the approval of the Mississippi Partnership Counseling to Career, C2C, youth program, work experience, worksite agreement through GTPDD, and authorization to participate in this program. Number 2 is request authorization to hire Pavion F. Norwood as a full-time maintenance worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Number 3, request authorization to hire Nick Florentino as the warehouse manager in the Starkville Utilities Water Sewer Department. And number 4 is request permission to allow Starkville Fire Department to conduct promotional process to fill positions of lieutenant and sergeant for Fire Station 5. Under Police, we have, number 4, consideration of the contract for traffic control and security services between Pine Lake Church and the city of Starkville pursuant to Mississippi Code Section 17-25-11 on a finding allowing Starkville police officers to provide private off-duty traffic control and security duties during worship times at the church and to wear their official uniform and firearm while in the performance of those duties is not likely to bring disrepute to the city, the Starkville Police Department, or the officers involved, and that this arrangement promotes the public interest. Under the Utilities Department, number 1, we have request authorization to purchase the electric facilities currently owned by Ford County Electric Power Association located along the east side of Highway 25 North toward Highway 182, then along Highway 182 from Highway 25 North to Jackson Street North, then along Jackson Street North to Garrett Road at depreciated book value of $60,564.40. That concludes the consent agenda.
Good job.
Thank you.
I want to say just one point. I know it's on the consent agenda, but concerning the sportsplex, this was a complete repair, a replacement, pullout of all the carpet, and I know we get a lot of comments on that, so that's a highly noted thing, and I'd like to see that proactiveness down there. Thank you, Mr. Peters, and thank you, Mr. Hammonds.
All right, now, we have, let's see, oh, yes, the Citizens' Fire Academy. I get to announce the members or the participants in the Citizens' Fire Academy. Mr. Chris Taylor, where are you? I saw you come in. Ah, okay. Ms. Donna Barnes, where is she? Is she hiding back there somewhere? There she is. Excellent, stand up, thank you. Mr. Willie Earl Thomas Sr., all right, and, okay, somebody help me with the name, please. Sadie Gassimi?
I'm going to be calling you Sadie.
Sadie, all right, well, Sadie, well, y'all, welcome to the Citizens' Academy. I think that's marvelous, so thank you all for participating. I know the chief is excited to have you. Thank you. All right, and that concludes my comments. Does any of the board members have comments?
Would you speak to Alderman Walker?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Alderman Walker's lost his grandmother this weekend, and so he is not going to be with us this evening, so we certainly send him our sympathies and thoughts on his loss. So, thank you. Any other Aldermen have any comments to make? All right, well, we will move into Citizens' Comments, and before we get the Citizens' Comments going, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the matter of the alcohol ordinance this evening, so if you want to come forward for Citizens' Comments, if you would confine them to something that isn't the alcohol ordinance, please. Please come forward, now would be the time. You have three minutes. If you'd state your name and your ward, that'd be great. We appreciate it.
Greetings to Mayor Boe, my name's Avon Turner, Ward 7. I want to recognize the mayor, the vice mayor, Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
And NAACP Project Chris Taylor. We would like for you to continue to pray for the Turner family. I had a weird dream about a week ago, the sea dog came to me in a dream, and someone called his name, and then the gun went off, and that about the mushy let me see. So, continue to pray for the Turner family. Certain people might be involved, we don't know, but yeah, continue to keep us in prayer. Continuing to be concerned about our garbage bags. We had a situation when the small boy pulled out a reed plant. We have limbs that in the road, and we almost, well, quick technique, stopped in time, someone jumped in here, it's a blind spot. In University Drive and Fership Street, coming out of Fership Street onto University Drive, it's a blind spot. We stopped in time, someone overlooked us, and that is some concern upstairs.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any other citizen comments?
Take a little longer, you guys. Is that really short? You're saying longer. Hello, my name is Emile Lovely, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Board.
Thank you, sir.
I come this afternoon with, this evening, rather, with concerns from a community organization that we've just formed. It's called the West Main Street Community Association, and we have a mission, and we want you folks to be aware of what we're doing. I will get a correspondence mail out to you, so that you can clearly understand what we're doing. But just briefly, we, our mission right now is to develop a community that enhances the quality of life for its members by preserving historical values, improving safety, appearance and infrastructure, and neighborly values. We are going to need your help and your support in putting these things across. There's a great need. We don't want to be another, we don't want to be another neighborhood that's displaced by high-rise apartment buildings and overly populated areas. That's my comment, and you'll be receiving this, but I just wanted to go on record as having brought this to your attention.
What are the boundaries of your association?
Around there is West Main Street, Port of 182, to 200 block of Ernest Jones Jr. Drive, and it goes down West Main Street, Ernest Jones Jr. Drive, to 182, and back up there. And included in that circle is a street called Rex Street, Olim Street, and Bailey Street.
Okay.
All those streets are encompassed in that. We had a meeting with the planning and zoning director, and we plan to have another meeting with him, and we'll outline all that, get some answers, and get some information to him. Any other questions you might have?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Okay, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Shamir Haynes, and I reside in Oktibah County. I'm here to speak on behalf of the school board candidate for the Starkville-Oktibah School District, Ms. Lisa Lynn Long. I've worked with her for the past three years at Mississippi State on the President's Commission on the Status of Women, as well as on the Starkville, the Sudeth PTO. I wanted to originally speak on her efforts with the morning recess at Sudeth and how it helped my son and his attention span in class, and I also wanted to kind of talk about her additional, her efforts with raising awareness to the additional childcare that we need here in Starkville. However, I'm sure you all have read her resume, you've read the nominations for her, so I'm just going to speak to her character. Lisa is a person who believes in social justice for all students, so I do believe as a board member, she's going to have all students' interest at her best heart, as well as she's not going to be biased towards any one particular group. Also, she understands the broad needs of the school districts here. The school district needs in Starkville, as well as the individual needs for each individual school. She understands the need for collaboration. She's open to feedback, comments of all citizens, parents, anyone who you ask. She's open to that, and for that reason, I believe that she's going to make amazing strides with the school board, the Starkville-Oktibah School District School Board, and I believe that she's going to be an asset as a board member.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Haynes. All right, anyone else? Citizens' Comments.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Board. Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Lisa Long, who is seeking to serve on...
If you state your name for me.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am. My name is Kenny Langley. For Lisa Long, who's seeking to serve on the Starkville-Oktibah School District Board of Trustees. I'm a Starkville resident and a parent of two children in school at Henderson Ward-Stewart and Emerson Family School. I have a background in secondary STEM education, working at the Research and Curriculum Unit at Mississippi State. I first met Lisa four years ago, when we, both of our kids went to Aiken Village at MSU, and since then, we've worked together, we've collaborated on several projects, also with her husband, Robert, benefiting the public school system. This includes the co-founding of the Health Task Team, which you've read about. Our first effort sought to expand health and fitness opportunities for the students, and then through considerable research and a thriving partnership with administration and faculty at Sudeth and the central office, our first project installed a fence along the playgrounds so students can spend the morning playing outside before class instead of waiting quietly in the hallways. As you've already heard, the results have been very encouraging thus far, and the Health Task Team continues to make progress on various projects and partnerships with the Sudeth and Starkville community members. Outside of the Health Task Team, Sudeth and Henderson Ward-Stewart PTO, church activities, and leading a Girl Scout group, which my wife co-leads with Lisa, and my son is there right now, otherwise he'd be yelling behind me. She's somehow found a way to do more, tutoring students, supporting teachers, organizing community meetings, and serving as a positive force for improvement in our schools. She understands that the success of our public schools is the most important key to the success of our community, and she's working to move Starkville forward every day. Looking ahead, I'm especially excited about Lisa's desire to engage the district and community around the very important, the very important and sensitive issue of race relations. We've had several conversations about this and feel there's tremendous opportunity in Starkville for beginning to unite our community through honest and intentional dialogue with our schools leading the way. Like you, Lisa is blessed with many talents, and she openly shares that with her community. She's very bright, deliberate, extremely well-organized. I wish I had those skills. She's even-keeled, inclusive, kind, warm, and always positive. It's rare to find her without a smile on her face, which is very refreshing. Her temperament, proven track record as a community leader, and background in education make her a top choice to serve on our school board. As a parent and citizen in Starkville, Lisa is exactly the kind of person I want leading our district forward. This is a candidate we cannot pass by. She's the right person to help lead a rising school district in a southeastern city that is Starkville. Thank you very much for your time, consideration, and service to our great community.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen. My name is Anne Buffington. My husband and I have lived within the Starkville City School District for over 25 years, and we've been very involved in the life of our schools for that period of time. Our two children have had the great benefit of graduating from Starkville High School, and I had the great pleasure of serving on the school district's Board of Trustees and as its president when we passed the 2008 school bond issue. And because of my experience, I know what it takes to be a successful school board member. My colleague and my friend, Lisa Long, is that person. Her educational background and her professional experience uniquely qualify her. You've seen her application. You know that she holds degrees from Rhodes College and from Columbia University. She literally has worked all over this world in making it a better place for children. And for the last nine years, she has brought that expertise and that passion to the children of our community through her volunteer service in her schools. The list is too long to describe the impact that she's made already on our children as a volunteer. But beyond her professional and volunteer qualifications, Lisa is a visionary, she's a collaborator, a passionate advocate, a team member, and yes, she's a listener. Characteristics so needed for leadership on the school board. She is not afraid to express her opinions or share her knowledge, yet she is always willing to listen to the other side of the discussion in order to find common ground. I feel certain that Lisa will take her role very seriously. She'll study the issues before the board. She will consider all points, and then she will make well-thought-out decisions. She's always, already proven that with you all, because she has reached out to each and every one of you, and she's talked to you about various... She will consider all points, and then she will make well-thought-out decisions. She's always, already proven that with you all because she has reached out to each and every one of you, and she's talked to you about various issues on her mind. She's regularly attended school board meetings, budget hearings. She's met with school administrators to prepare herself to serve as an effective school board member. She also has a sincere interest in the diverse patchwork that makes up our wonderful school district. Lisa's commitment to our district is deep and it's clear to all who have worked alongside her. I urge you tonight to give her the opportunity to serve our children. I feel certain this appointment will be one of which we can all be proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Felisa Ashford, and I'm here on behalf of Dr. Deborah Lindsay Prince. I come to you because Deborah is a lifetime resident of Starkville, Mississippi. She is on the Executive Board of the Boys and Girls Club. She is a member, uh, she's a, excuse me. She is also a worker, has worked at Mississippi State for over thirty-seven months, maybe about thirty years. She's great with kids. She's a mother of three. I feel that Deborah is a great candidate. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you all of her qualification because her qualifications speak for themselves. So I ask that you, that you definitely consider Deborah as being one of, being able to serve on the school board. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Any other citizens' comments? All right. Seeing none, we will move to the interviews for the candidates. And I know a couple of you have done this before, but what we'll do is, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I missed you. Come on. My apologies.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen. On the behalf of the Sturgis Mississippi Rally Board, I'd like to thank y'all for your in-kind services that Police Chief Frank Nichols did and Calvin Ware helped us with everything. It turned out to be a great success, and everybody had a lot of good comments coming down through Main Street. So I just wanted to thank y'all for what y'all did for us on that.
That was so cool of them coming down Main Street.
Yeah, we enjoyed that. Enjoyed that. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay. Back to our, back to our interviews. We will be interviewing the candidates, and what, what we would like to do is ask the ones who are not being interviewed, we're going to do alphabetical, alphabetical order. So Mr. Davis will be first, and those of you who are, the two of you who are not being interviewed, you certainly can stay. It's a public hearing, but we ask that you step out so that if the questions remain the same, that they will be received at pretty much the same time, and there won't be any, any sort of extra help there or early, early knowledge to be thinking about. So if Mr. Davis would come forward, yes, please. You may stand, you may sit, you may do whatever you like. Just make that microphone yours. If you'd like to make open comments, then the board will be, will ask questions, and then you can make some closing comments if you like.
All right. Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro tempore, members of the board, Madam Clerk, Mr. Attorney. Good to see all of you this evening. Thank y'all for taking the time on your busy agenda tonight. I know y'all have other things you want to get to, so I'll try to be brief and let y'all move along with your agenda. Let me say what an honor it is to be here in front of you on this occasion. Obviously, the good thing is you have three outstanding candidates to pick from. I think y'all heard a little bit of that illustrated in citizens' comments. I'm very excited about our school district. We are doing wonderful things for our children. We are moving in the right direction. I'm excited to potentially be a member of the Board of Trustees, to work with what would be my colleagues on the board, the school administration, the superintendent and his administrative team in setting policy, moving the district forward in big picture. We've got a lot of good things going on, from moving through the consolidation process to our building project with the demonstration school, partnership school out on campus, and other various things. So I'm excited. I want to offer my expertise in public budgeting, finance, capital planning, facility planning to those efforts. I think it's the right time for our district to start making those types of plans and moving ahead because while we are doing wonderful things with buildings, facilities, we can't rest. We need to plan for the future. We need to work with our administrative staff to make sure they have the appropriate facilities, the best faculty they can have, and the appropriate programming for our children. That's done through proper budgeting, good planning, solid ad valorem tax administration, and, and working with all of our partners that we can. So I'm going to open it up. I'm going to turn it back to you, Madam Mayor. Like I said, I know y'all have got a long agenda tonight.
We do, but this is one of the most important things we'll be doing.
I understand.
So we're here as long as, as long as we need to be here.
I understand.
Okay. Well, I will, I will start it out because I was, I was intrigued, the budgeting and finance aspect. Have you looked at that budget? Is there something in particular about that budget that you're funding?
You know, it's, it's always easy to sit on the outside and not have been in certain discussions and have questions. I've, I've taken my time to talk with Dr. Kobel, President of the School Board, about a couple of things. The, the one thing that I think our district should be applauded on is their handling of our public's money, particularly in lieu of, or in light of decreased state funding that all state agencies across the board are, are having to face. I think that they have done yeoman's work at the Central Office in handling those issues. And it, it's easy to pick one line item or that out that you may have had questions and/or comments about, but until you have the entire picture and are able to sit in and, and ask the questions in those budget formulae, y'all've got y'all's budget hearing tonight. I mean, Chairman Sistrunk can tell you, it's, it's not an easy task to put together, and the school district's budget is a lot bigger than, than y'all's. So.
Okay. All right. Were there any specific goals that you had in mind in, in running for the school board?
Well, in seeking appointment to the school board, what I wanted to do was make sure that we continue on the trajectory that we are on. We are making great strides in moving forward as a district in handling what has come through consolidation. The partnership school is wonderful. However, we cannot lose focus of the longer-term planning horizon. We can't sit back and rest on our laurels, saying that that's going to be a panacea for all of our building needs. Hopefully, this population, the city of Starkville continues to grow. And we need to make sure that we have the appropriate planning in place, and from both the, the facility and, and fiscal, planning in place to be able to address those needs to where we're not five, 10 years down the road, and all of a sudden it's, oh, my goodness, we're in a bad spot. We, you know, we caught some curveballs through the consolidation process that stressed our facilities. And the school district did a wonderful job of dealing with those on the fly. However, if we had known those situations were coming, I'm sure that we could have planned better and done differently. But with the situation they had, they did the best they could. And that's, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I want to work for, is to make sure that as we move forward and continue to grow, that we are able to plan for those increased enrollments, the facility needs, also the faculty needs. And it all comes back to money and how we're going to be able to do that, as you guys know. I mean, y'all are faced with a laundry list of, of wishes, requests, wants. You'd love to do them. Every one of y'all's got a capital improvement project sitting on the city engineer's desk right now that you would love to have done in your ward, but you don't have the money in your budget to do it. It's just a fact of the matter. We need to make sure that as a school district, we are moving forward and that we try to prioritize those things and move forward and do that.
Okay. I have, I have one more, and then I'll, I'll yield to whoever. I have great interest in a, in a joint use agreement between the city and the school district for use of playgrounds and parks and that sort of thing. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure. I think that the joint use agreement between the city and the school district is a wonderful thing. I think that, as you and I have talked about several times, there have been too many informal arrangements for us as a, as a city. If we can work something out between city and school district, I think that's great. I'll give you a great example of something that would be wonderful. The first week of school, maybe the second day of school, came a torrential rain on, you know, right at 7:30. I happened to be in carpool down at Over Street, dropping off my daughter, and I was able to observe Mr. Smithman's flooding problem on his corner. And the interesting thing is, he's right. That water's coming from what used to be the cremary property, straight across the playground, right down across his property. I mean, it's deep. It's flooding. It would be interesting to me to look at doing a joint collaborative process, city, school, to help remedy that, something similar to what was proposed on campus in between landscape architecture and forestry department, which was basically a wetlands thing. In my mind, if things could be worked out, designed properly, and cost shared appropriately, potentially handles a drainage problem that backs up to our school there, comes across city property into private citizens' yards and potentially homes. It potentially could provide a wonderful learning opportunity for children, creating a unique ecosystem there, and basically build the type of collaboration between city, school, and obviously, in that case, we'd have to have the university most likely involved through their expertise in landscape architecture and/or the extension service involved in those types of things. But that's the idea of making sure we plan long-term, looking at things that can benefit both things, and getting back to your point about mutual use. I think there are plenty of benefits to those types of arrangements, with that being a specific idea.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board members with questions? Speak up.
Oh, Mr. Davis, what would you say would be the number-one challenge facing the school district? You know, the number-one challenge facing the school district, I think, is going to be how the school district deals with decreased state funding if that happens again, which probably it will. I think everybody in Jackson is, is not too optimistic about where our budget's going to be come next legislative session. If we continue to get mid-year budget cuts, that is a very difficult thing to, to deal with. How you handle those things, I know that they were very conservative in their budget building this year for a lot of reasons. And I'm going to tell you, I think right now, and it's the same you guys are dealing with, budgets are always going to be your number-one issue because that's going to drive everything else you want to do, everything else you wish to do. The availability of funding is going to drive your ability to deliver service. I mean, it's pretty simple. So when you, when you ask a question, what's the number-one issue facing the district, you know, the way our state budget is, if we continue to get cut educational fundings at the local level and it keeps getting passed down to us, it's very difficult. It's very difficult to plan around. It's very difficult to continue to offer the same services. And to our district's credit, they have done a fabulous job of dealing with that. Let's hope it doesn't continue. But, there you go. With your background and experiences, what would you say makes you stand out among the other two candidates? Well, you know, I've, I've served two terms on the Board of Aldermen here in the city of Starkville. I, in my day job, work with local governments throughout the state of Mississippi on board matters, personnel matters, budgeting matters, ad valorem taxation matters. I think all those translate directly into being a good member of the Board of Trustees for our school district. I think those are issues that, that the board should be focused on. Look, the school board's done an outstanding job and hired an outstanding superintendent. Job of the school board is to provide him and his staff the, the resources to be able to accomplish the stated goals and policies of the district. And that's what I want to do. That's where I think my expertise can, can help.
Hold on, Ms. Sistrunk. I saw your hand.
I'll follow up on that most pressing issue facing the schools, the biggest challenge. How, how will you address that? And how does that fit with your role as a board member?
To be quite honest with you, I think that the board has started to address those issues through their budgeting process. They're making plans for the future. They, they, if you notice, they, they were trying to increase their ending fund balance, you know, which is a very prudent move to be conservative in how they budgeted their money this, well, what will be physically year 18 for them, to make sure that we continue to stay on top of that, make sure that we continue to, like I said, plan appropriately so that we can spend money prioritized in the right spots and make sure that, that the overall mission of our district is, is able to be accomplished. And again, I give them great credit for how they've handled this up to this point.
And could you tell us a little bit about your involvement with the schools over the last two or three years? Do you attend board meetings, engaged at some other level?
Sure. I have two children in the district. I have been to multiple school functions on their behalf. I have been to school board meetings in, in the past. My wife is a super-active member of PTO, has been involved in multiple schools' PTOs, and is, you know, I, basically, I, I remind her that that is a volunteer position for, for her, you know, because she spends a tremendous amount of time through those organizations. So we, as a family, have been very, very active in that, this particular position, and as far as it translates, fits more into my skill set than hers. And I felt this was my opportunity to be, to be able to contribute, so.
Thank you.
Hold on.
You have a wanted question. Our next question, what grade are your children, present or ten?
My daughter is in the fifth grade, and she loves your daughter as a PE coach, by the way. And my son is in eighth grade.
Any closing remarks you'd like to make?
Like I said, I, I think that our school district is on a great trajectory. We're doing things well. I think that the fact that the candidates you have had apply for this vacant position and the, and the quality of them speaks volumes of the school district and what they have going on. I just humbly ask for, for your support to appointment to the Board of Trustees. Something I, I would love to do. So thank y'all for your time.
Thank you very much.
One question.
Yes, sir.
When are y'all planning to actually vote on this?
The 19th is the next board meeting that, that was going to be.
Are y'all, are y'all still on the 19th schedule?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless the board chooses otherwise.
All right.
As of right now, I have no knowledge other than that.
All right. Thank y'all. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Someone getting Ms. Long? Okay. We all are a good-looking group. Break the silence here while we're waiting on Ms. Long.
I think I'm more nervous than any of the candidates we're going to interview. This is very important. We want to get it right.
What have you got, Chris?
Certificate of completion for higher cabin, six whole weeks.
Okay. Congratulations. If you'd like to make an opening statement?
Okay.
Please feel free to do so, and then we'll ask some questions, and you can make a closing statement.
Okay. Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the board. Thanks for this opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to open by telling you a little bit about why I'm interested in this, in serving on the Board of Trustees. About 10 years ago, when I told a friend of mine that my husband and I were moving to Starkville, she said, oh, Starkville, Mississippi, it's like a little slice of heaven. And my husband, Robert McMillan- And my husband, Robert McMillan, was born here, and he went through our school system starting in first grade in 1975 until sixth grade, and then he moved to Ohio in seventh grade. So he knew what, he knew where we were coming to from Memphis, but I didn't. I was coming from Memphis, but I'd lived in Washington, D.C. before that, and was used to bigger cities, so I didn't know what Starkville was like. But the longer I lived here, the more I see what our friend meant. It is a little slice of heaven. And I see our schools as an integral pillar and piece of that slice of heaven, and one reason why it is that way, especially for our families with children. The school district for our daughter has been part of her life since she was three months old, and she started at Emerson Preschool, and then she was at Suddeth, and now she's at Henderson Ward Stewart. And I have relished being involved with every step of the way with her, partly because of my work, and you've seen my resume, you know, I've worked in different countries and in education all of my career. And something that we talk about with education programming is the importance of parent involvement, and how really you can't have a successful education program or school without that. So I have loved now being able to practice what I preached all those years before I was married, before I had children. Now I have the opportunity to do it, and I have loved that. I've also been really grateful and really impressed with all of the other parents who are doing the same thing that I am doing. We have wonderful parents in this district. And I'm just always impressed with how much time they give, and how they are there to support, they're there to help teachers with big things, great or small, and it's a real team spirit that I appreciate so much. I understand the importance of this appointment for our city, and for our community, and for our schools. And I've worked hard to prepare myself for the position. And attending the school board meetings, since Dr. Pezzant has been leading, has strengthened my desire to serve. And I've just been really impressed with all of the ideas that Dr. Pezzant, Dr. Malding, and all the other administrators are bringing to each meeting, and all of the plans they have for making a bigger strategic plan for the district, and for really moving us ahead to where we need to go. I would love to put my skill set and passion for education to work by being part of the school board, and being part of the new chapter with Dr. Pezzant, and part of shaping the new strategic plan, part of the partnership school, and having the opportunity to be a model, not only for the state, but for the nation, of a university-public-school district partnership. So those are a lot of the reasons why I would love to have the opportunity to be a school board trustee, and why I'm interested in serving.
Good, thank you. What, I'm going to lead off, just because I got the mic, so. What is your experience with budgeting? Things like, it's a very large budget, the school budget is quite large.
Yes, well, I've managed very large education program budgets with the education programs that I've managed. The biggest one was almost $1 million, and that was in Albania, and it was through rehabilitation program for schools that had been used as places to house refugees during the Balkans crisis. So it's obviously a very different budget set, but through that process, I learned, of course, that money has to be used judiciously and wisely and not wasted. So I had to keep a really mindful eye on all the details, all the different budget lines, and ask questions when I had them about where some of the money was going, and, you know, down to the penny sometimes, how it was being used. So I have that experience. I've also been trying to learn more about school district budgets and finances, ever since I knew I wanted to throw my hat in the ring for this position. And I also have a lot of confidence in our Chief Financial Officer, and Ms. Magar, and other administrators, and I know they'll be there to answer any questions and help me along the way. And lastly, I've also, from what I understand, there's an orientation, a two-day orientation for new school board members, where a lot of information around financial management and interpretation will be given to new school board members.
Okay. Did you have any specific concerns that caused you to want to be on the board?
Not really, I guess, concerns, but, you know, I do, I have some interest in things that I would love to see us look at in the district. Some I think we already are, but then there are some specific issues that I'm especially interested in. Should I share those?
Please.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned earlier, I'd love to be part of the strategic planning process with the new chapter, a new superintendent, and Dr. Pezzant's leadership, and looking at our data, and where we're doing well, where we're, you know, where we have some weaknesses, and then working together with parents and teachers and all of our school personnel to see how we can move forward and address those weaknesses and build on our strengths. Something else I'm very interested in is appreciating and celebrating the diversity that we have in this school district. We're so fortunate to live in a district that is so diverse. And our children have such an opportunity to learn from each other, and to learn from children from other parts of the world, who are here because of perhaps their family's work with Mississippi State, but it's a very unique opportunity. And I would love to help our whole community, I think, be more aware of how fortunate we are, and recent research that shows that children who work together on class projects or in the classroom together with people who are not like themselves, develop critical thinking skills and problem-solving skills, and greatly benefit from that diversity in the classroom. They also have, report less vulnerability, less loneliness, less insecurity, and less bullying than children who attend schools where they're mostly just one race or one ethnicity. Something else I'd love to build upon is the Leader in Me program that was introduced last year in the school district. I think it's a really great program for our kids, and is developing their healthy habits and leadership skills. I'd love to look at how that is affecting their behavior, and if there's some dovetailing that could be done between student discipline and the Leader in Me. And also their involvement, you know, what does, how does that speak to their future civic engagement and community engagement, as they develop those leadership skills, and those are instilled in their everyday actions? Another big issue that I'm interested in, and you probably have seen from my resume, is early childhood education. And I wonder how we could possibly build on the early childhood collaborative and work even more closely with Emerson Family School to prepare our children for kindergarten, possibly looking at adding more seats to pre-K seats, or looking at what, you know, what kind of partnerships or possibilities could there be there? Because that's where it starts, that's the foundation. If children haven't had the chance to go to preschool, they're at a disadvantage when they get to kindergarten. So those are some of the issues I'm interested in.
Okay, I have one last question. Do you have any thoughts about joint use agreements between the city and the school district for their space?
Yes, I think that is wonderful, when it can happen, especially the parks. And I know at Suddeth, that is a playground that is used a lot on the weekends and after school, and it's open. So, you know, children in the neighborhood, children, not in the neighborhood, but who would like to come and play can easily go there. And I think, you know, where our schools, where it's just logistically more difficult to make that happen, there's maybe been a little bit of frustration from the community that they're not able to use that playground or space after hours. So I think joint use agreements are a wonderful idea. We live near Overstreet, and we often take our daughter down to play on the playground, in the playground on the weekends.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members? Mr. Little?
Ms. Long, what would you say you believe to be the biggest or number-one challenge facing the school district?
I think that the number-one challenge, and I'm not, I think we're already trying to do this, but I think it's a challenge for all schools, and that is really personalizing education for children. So, you know, how can we really look at the scores that children have, their achievement rates, and then interpret those in a way that allows teachers to plan better for their children? And I think Dr. Pezzant and his administrators are already working on this by using new data management systems that are more user-friendly, and that can help principals and teachers interpret that data better. But I think it's a big challenge, because we have a lot of students, we have a lot of children, but how can we ensure not only that lesson plans are being made that are best to address whatever challenges they are facing, but also, when it's a case of a different kind of, maybe it's not an achievement score, but it's a behavioral issue, or special education, or an intervention that maybe hasn't been caught yet, how can we make sure that we're catching those, and that we are addressing them for each and every child? And for children who have not had the success that we would have liked so far, how can we, how can we build their self-esteem and make sure they know that we do, as the motto for the district is this year, expect excellence from them every day? And we know they can do it, and how do we get them to think that about themselves, and also to know that the teachers are on their side, and they're there to help them to achieve that excellence? I think that's, it's a difficult job, but I think it's what we have to do, to bring everybody up to the next level, and raise ultimately the success of the students, and then our own accountability score to get it up to an A from where it is now.
What would you say, from your background and experience, makes you stand out among the other two candidates?
Well, I think I've been very involved with the schools, and I think that's a, it's been a huge advantage for me, because it's, it's given me a perspective on what's happening in the schools. And granted, I've been most involved so far with Emerson, Suddeth, and Ward Stewart, because that's where my daughter has been. But I think that perspective has given me a greater appreciation for the district than I would have had before I had been involved, and also an understanding of the kinds of challenges that we have, and the ways I think I could contribute if I were on the Board of Trustees, to understanding the issues that might come before us, and really just trying to use my skill set to help address those.
Hold on, Ms. Strong.
I'm tagtaming with Alderman Little on the question of the biggest challenge that you see facing our school system. How would you use your position as a board member, and the constraints that come with that position, to resolve that issue, that challenge?
The challenge of addressing the needs of every child, and...
Yes.
Well, I think one would be to support the superintendent and administrators when they do bring new ideas to the board, such as going to a new data management system, or bring maybe creative, out-of-the-box ideas that maybe haven't been tried before, but might work, to really listen to those and keep an open mind, and to, you know, also really discuss together and bring ideas for ways that we could address such a big challenge as making sure that we're helping every child achieve excellence. And, I mean, I think another big issue that kind of goes along with that challenge is how do we attract the best teachers? And so I think if we are becoming a stronger and stronger district, we'll become a more and more desirable place to work, and we'll just be able to build upon that. So I think just working as a team, and trying to do our best by the children and by the teachers, and supporting the excellent teachers we have, making sure we're building them professionally, and giving them the opportunities that they need and that they want to develop themselves, and to retain those wonderful teachers and attract new teachers. It's all part of the package.
Thank you. And my other question dealt with involvement in the schools and describing that, but you've already addressed that, so thank you very much.
Hold on, Ms. Long.
Ms. Long, how many children do you have present in the school system now?
Just one. She's in second grade at Ward Stewart. I only have one child, she's my only one.
How long you say you've been living here, Charlotte?
It'll be 10 years in February.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay, Ms. Long, would you like to make a closing remarks or closing statement?
Yes, thank you, yes. I'm a passionate believer in the power of a strong, quality, public education system, making a life-changing difference for the children it serves, and in every child's right to a free, high-quality education. But I also know it doesn't just magically happen, and it should never be taken for granted. I know it takes the dedication of local government, representatives like yourselves, of very hard-working teachers, and staff, and administrators, but also with the support of parents and the community, and with backing and financial support from the local, state, and national government. In Starkville, I've seen the spark, I've seen it firsthand in the schools, I've seen the way the teachers give hugs, they give high fives, they ask someone when they're not having a good day what's wrong. I mean, I've seen that, and so I know how hard our teachers work, and our principals work, and our administrators, and our local officials, and school board members to support our schools. I think we have a great team, and it would be one of the greatest honors of my lifetime to be a part of that by serving on the Board of Trustees. I respectfully ask that you all appoint me to the school board, and if entrusted with this appointment, I promise to continue to work very hard to fulfill the responsibilities of the position in a way that strengthens our schools and our community now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Chief, you got it covered for the next, Dr. Prince?
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. You can make opening comments if you like, and then we'll ask questions, and you can make closing comments.
Okay. I appreciate the time to talk with you this evening, Mayor Sproul, Vice Mayor Perkins, and rest of the Board of Alderman. I've had a few people come and tell me, you know, third time is a charm. I really don't believe in charms, but it made me start thinking about three, the number three. And so tonight, I want to triangulate some data for you, because in research, when you triangulate data, it helps you come to a better sense of validity for the conclusion that I want you to make at the end of this. So three areas I want to triangulate for you. It's my experience with the district, my professional experience and skill sets, and me as a person. So, my experience with the district. Thinking about this, and it was kind of like alarming to me, but I've been involved with the district in one way or another for over 40 years. That's almost half a century. I've been involved with Starkville School District first as a student, then as a teacher, then as a parent, and now as a grandparent. But it's my experience that I have with my, I tell everyone I have two batches of children, two batches of children. My experiences with my children, the both batches have given me a wide awareness of a lot that goes on in the school district. My first batch of children, I had a son and twin girls. My twin girls went through the gifted program at Starkville City Schools, at the time, Starkville Public Schools at the time, from the second grade on. In fact, one of my twins was the first person in the district to ever make a perfect score on the Algebra I State Assessment. I had a son. And my girls, they learned the schooling system, they learned to play it well, and they could operate in it. My son wasn't so successful. My son was, has often been described as like a bull in a china shop. If this helps you understand it any bit, he was in the third grade, and he wore a size 12 shoe. So he had a difficult time navigating a lot of things. So he had a difficult time navigating a lot of things, but school wasn't for him. My girls in the gifted program, my son asked me to have him tested for special education so he wouldn't have to work hard. Jumped to 2017, my twin girls are still very intelligent, they're very talented, most of all, they are gainfully employed, but neither of them have a college degree. My son, China in the, bull in the china shop, will graduate with his master's degree in August. He couldn't figure out the schooling thing, it took something different from, for him to be successful. He was always just as intelligent. I was blessed with the fourth child, it's not my biological child, but I say it's the best child I'd ever had. He was born under circumstances that were not ideal. He, he was born under rough circumstances, and as a result, he has some developmental delays and disabilities. But I tell everyone, that's the best child I ever had. That child is an overachiever. His IQ says he should be able to do one thing, but day by day by day, he does something totally different. So he overachieves, he does what his IQ says he shouldn't do. So through those experiences, as a parent going through the school district, I've seen kids at the top of their game, I've seen kids in the wide middle part of their game who didn't exactly know where they were going to fit in, and then I see children that need extra attention and help. I've seen it all. I was a teacher in the school district for 11 years, so I've been the P and the T of the PTO and PTA for a long time. That's my personal experience with the district, like I said, for over, over 40 years. My professional experiences and skill sets that make me uniquely qualified for the board position is, one, I have experience being on executive boards. I'm a member of the Executive Board of Boys and Girls Club of Golden Triangle, I'm a member of the Executive Board of NAACP. I'm also one of 50 faculty senators at Mississippi State University where I also serve on the Executive Committee. And in all three of those positions, I have various duties and challenges. One of the biggest things that I'm responsible for is developing and ensuring policy is followed. I've also had experience on the, with the NAACP, I serve as a treasurer. I was a former member of the Executive Committee for my, for the Class of 1981, where we would raise money to offer scholarship for, scholarships for children of our, for our children and our children's children, and also served as a treasurer there. So, serving as a treasurer of any organization lets you know that people really have trusted me, because I am a trustworthy person. I have my notes of things I wanted to make sure I tell y'all tonight, because sometime, one of the previous two times I walked away, I said, "I should have told them this, I should have told them that." But, when I got out, it was raining so hard and I just kind of, that, so, um, other professional experiences, um, I've been working with the district in addition to my roles at, my roles in the P spot and the T spot, I've written grants for the district, I've evaluated grants for the district, I have served as science fair judges, reality fair judges, I have never turned down the district's help for anything in, well, maybe in those years when I was a student, I probably wasn't an ideal student at the time, but since that time, I've always been available for the district. And it's my love and passion for the district that drives me to want to be on the board, which brings me to personal attributes. Not that I really have to tell y'all this, but one of the attributes I have is that I'm persistent. I don't give up. I'm used to things being hard, okay? Let's, I'm going, I'm, I'm not going to give up. Another quality of mine is that I'm passionate. I'm passionate about helping other people. I'm especially passionate about helping people that need us most. I'm a caring person, I'm a dependable person, I'm a respectful person, but I am a demanding person. I hold myself accountable and I hold others accountable. I could tell you a lot of good things about me, but this was just my opening statement, but I hope, and it's easy to appear to be something when you focus on one avenue and you can say, "Oh, that person is this or that." I hope I've been able to bring all, or triangulate some data for you to see that this is who I am, I'm not putting up a facade. I'm not perfect, but I'm authentic, and I'm, I'm genuine in what I say and what I do. So that's my opening statement.
Thank you. Okay, um, let me ask, you mentioned being a treasurer and grants and that sort of thing. Do you have any experience with budgeting governmental type, or dealing with governmental type budgets?
Governmental type budgets, no. 501(c) budgets, yes. We deal with the budget each and every meeting with Boys and Girls Clubs, and I'm learning a lot. We're working with a different group of CPAs now, so I'm learning more and more. So, I have experience working with budgets if that's an area where I'm learning more and more each, I mean, when you know a little about something, it's easy to learn a lot. So if we were talking about a statistical regression to the mean, I would be the one bucking way up when it comes to dealing with boards, with board, with, um, budgets.
Okay. Did you have any specific concerns that have caused you to want to be on the school board? Is there something in particular that drives you for this?
Being on the school board has been something that's on my bucket list for a while, just opportunity has now presented itself and I'm prepared now. But there is a concern that really bothers me and has been present and a concern of mine since I was a student here, it's the, um, that's not an easy way, it's the achievement gap. We're not unique in that we're the only place that has an achievement gap. And when I talk about achievement gap, two major achievement gaps. One, achievement gaps between African-American students, Caucasian students, another achievement gap is between economically disadvantaged students and dis, students who are not. So, I've witnessed that gap even when I was a student here. I've conducted educational research mainly on the effects of poverty and education and well-being of young children for over 20 years now, so I know a lot about achievement gaps. What I didn't know until, I guess, last year was that Starkville has a serious achievement gap issue. In fact, in language arts, we're the third worst district in the state out of 144 districts in terms of the achievement gap between African-American students, white students scoring proficient above on the state test. For the other minority students that are in our district, there's a flip gap in the other minority students outperform the white students. In the area of math, we're the fir, fourth worst district in terms of the size of our gap. I know the school district lists closing that achievement gap as their, like, number one goal of their strategic plan. I think I have the skill sets and the knowledge to help them close that achievement gap. We have to do a better job of preparing all of our children to leave school, college, or career ready. We won't make, our community will never be all that it can be until we do a better job of educating all of our children.
Um, one thing, my, my last question is, I, I have an interest, I'll go ahead and confess, I have an interest in having the joint use between the city and the school for facilities like parks and, and some of those kinds of things, and I just wondered what your thoughts on that were, are.
Okay. My thoughts on that are, my, the thoughts that I have on that are that we have to do a better job of tearing down silos. We have every, this group doing this, this group doing that, we're duplicating services and we're not getting the bang for our buck. So using the joint facilities for the school, for the community, for other things, that's very efficient, and it helps bring the community together. So I am in favor of the joint use of things between the district and the community. We, we have to really embrace our whole community, and beyond that, we have to bring in the community, we have to bring in the church, we have to engage more people of our entire community.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Carter.
Oh, first of all, thank you for applying. And to hear, you know, those are overly alarming statistics that you just mentioned about the achievement gap between minorities or socioeconomic factors, is it something within the classroom that we're not correctly doing? Is it something within the community? And what, I mean, that to me is just an alarming, you know, figure, why we're the third worst out of 140-some-odd districts?
Well, there's a lot of reasons why we could be the third worst. I can't tell you what's going on in individual classrooms. I can tell you it's not one thing. I can tell you it's going to take a work in a lot of different overlapping areas, it's going to take shared use things, it's going to take the whole community taking ownership. We can't place all the ownership on how our students achieve, on the parents, on the teacher, on any one thing. There's something that we all could do better.
Thank you.
Hold on, Little?
Um, when you mentioned the achievement gaps, what do you, would say would be the number one challenge facing the district now?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
What would you say would be the number one challenge facing the school district? Would that be the achievement gaps or...
Um, I would have to say the achievement gap, because in spite of everything that the school's in charge to do, our number one priority is educating children. If we're not doing that, nothing else matters.
Okay. From your, you know, you filled us in a good bit on the background and experiences. From your background and experiences, what would, why, what would you say would make you a better candidate above and beyond the other two?
To make me, well, a lot of things that make me a better candidate. One is my history with the district. I don't think any other candidate has been involved with the district on multiple levels for over 40 years. Number two, the passion I have for all children, not black children, not white children, not advantaged children, I have a passion for all children. I have a passion to help people. People tell me I need to smile more and all this, I think that's really a defensive mechanism I have, because then if I smile more, people approach me more and then they'll get more out of me. I, I don't tell people no. It comes out of me, so it's hard for me to tell people no. So I have a passion for helping others. Also, I see the potential that our district could have. We have too many resources in Starkville, Mississippi to be an average school. There's nothing average, there should be nothing average about our community.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman, Sister.
This is our third time through, we, we've got this down pat too, so with this three thing. How would you, as a board member, address that challenge, that thing that you see is the biggest challenge, the achievement gap? And knowing that as a board member, you have some constraints about what you can and cannot do, so...
Um, each summer I teach a research cap, research class on evaluating school programs. And the first assignment that they have to do is they have to go back to their district and find an evaluation report on anything the school has done, any evaluation that they've done. That's the hardest assignment they have off, summer. So one thing we have to do is, as a team, you know, our district, we're data-rich, we have more data than, I mean, but sometimes I feel like we're information-poor. How can we better use that data to get us, to help us close that gap? How can we use that data to identify students that are disengaged and engage them? See, if we can engage them, that's the first part of, of helping them get over those, those humps. Somewhere down the line, my son became engaged, and now he's going to have a master's degree in August. Do you know how many nights I've, how many sleepless nights I've had thinking he could have been one of those bad statistics that are often attached to African-American males? So we have to do a better job of engaging all of our students and finding, helping all of our students find where they're going to fit in, because I, I truly believe in Maslow's hierarchy of learning. We have to get them a sense of belonging. Once we get them a sense of belonging, we can pull on the other stuff, but it's going to take all of us working together.
Thank you. And, and if, if you want to, if you want to talk a little bit more about how you've been engaged with the schools in the last two or three years, you've covered that already, but that was my other question.
Okay. Um, let me bag up again. In my educational research, I've conducted a lot of research on parent involvement. And one of the things about parent involvement is that we have to learn to recognize parent involvement on various levels and not value one level over another level, okay? So some of the ways I've been involved with the district over the last two or three years is that I worked with Tommy Vance to write a couple of grants for the school district, arts grants. I've evaluated school grants for the school district. One level of parent involvement is that unless my child is sick or some other thing, he's going to be at school, he's going to have his supplies, he's going to have enough supplies to share with the kid that does not have a supply. The teachers, the principals, the administrators know I'm available to be there to help with anything. I have worked with several administrators in the school district, hours upon hours upon hours, to help them in their educational journey. And I, I didn't get paid for that, it was out of my heart, helping them to perfect their game, and so, I don't know, I can name off all of the doctors that I have worked with that are part of the school district, but it takes all of that in there. You want me to...
No, that's great, thank you.
I tutor students, I tutor parents to teach them, to help them tutor their own children, so, like I say, it's, I don't say no.
I've got some projects for you later, so...
Good evening, Dr. Prince, this, this is our third time facing one another on the same issue. Thank you for applying. Your third time around, mine is a simple. How many grandkids do you have in the school system?
I have one grandchild in the school system. Yeah, I'm not going to make people mad, but he's like the best kid. I have one grandchild, and my son is in the seventh grade now. Like I said, he has some developmental problems and he tries for everything. He tried out for the basketball team, didn't make it, "That's okay, try it, so we're going to help him try to be a manager." He's on the football team, and I pray for the seventh grade team to get up a lot of points, because when they get up a lot of points, guess what? He just plays, you know? I'm letting him try everything. He's going to find his niche of being perfect or being good at something.
Thank you, sir. My son is the head coach for the seventh grade, I'm telling him to make sure he let him play.
I mean, come on, you're a good coach, how many people on the team at field at times? Eleven? What's it going to hurt if one player, I don't know if they're doing, the other team can keep making, you know? Yeah, come on!
Unless there are any other questions, if you have any closing remarks you'd like to make, Dr. Prince, please come out.
Um, I guess my, like, like I said, starting off, this is my third time around. This time, second time, the first time, I knew I was the best candidate for the job in my heart. Now, maybe I did not convey the right information to the people that made that decision, but I can't think of anyone else that would be better for the district and better for the children, better for the community than me.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you, we appreciate you applying again. And all the candidates are excellent, as we all know, so we're, we're, it's a hard decision for, for everyone, but that's, that's good, because that means, you know, we've got good choices to make, so thank you so much. I'm sorry, Chief?
I'm going to see you back there.
Oh, no, I, we, come, get back in the audience. I didn't mean to leave, leave him out hanging there.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Of course, Vice Mayor.
We've been sitting for ninety minutes, hour and a half, maybe have a recess?
If you would like to recess.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, we'll do that, we'll be back in ten minutes.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're back in business, please. Y'all would come back? Don't make me use the gavel, please. Ooh, I was hoping y'all wouldn't make me do that. I hate that noise. Come back and join us, please. And we're going to, we are going to proceed with the next... And we're gonna, we are going to proceed with the next, next item, or actually, a couple items. We've got public hearings, and then after that, we'll be pretty close to done, having gone to consent agenda for most things. Our first public hearing is on the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget and proposed tax levies for the city of Starkville. And I'm gonna pass this one on to our Budget Chair, Alderman Sistrunk, to let her make whatever presentation she wishes before we open it as a public hearing.
Thank you very much. And I just finished promising someone that this would take two minutes, so here we go. The budget is balanced. It is flat over last year in terms of millage, so there's no tax increase. And I could probably stop right there, so.
Okay.
The increased revenues, which come from sales tax and property taxes, as new properties have rolled onto the books, have been used for primarily salaries and wages and benefits, continuation of some programs that were started in the last fiscal year. We do have some money in there for capital improvements. They anticipate our issuing debt to fund that. We expect to fund that debt from current debt service, so we don't expect to increase our budget for debt service to fund those capital projects. But balanced budget, no tax increase. I think that's all anybody wants to know, so.
Any comments from the board before I open it as a public hearing? Okay? All right, I'm gonna open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishes, who wants to come talk about their thoughts on the budget, you are welcome to do so. And now would be the time. All right, Ms. Sistrunk, you have done such a good job that no one is interested in commenting on the budget. All right, I think the operative was no tax increase, and that was the end of that.
I think that's it.
All right, I will close it as a public hearing. Any further discussion from the Board of Alderman on this matter? Okay, well, let's move along to the really interesting stuff. We now have a public hearing on amending the ordinance 2009-06, which is Municipal Code Section, Chapter 10, relating to the sale of alcohol within the city of Starkville, Mississippi. And I'm guessing that we have a lot of folks here who are wishing to speak on this, since the audience is still pretty robust. So what I'm gonna do is, well, first I'm gonna just take a poll, all right? Because we have a kind of a pro-con thing here, so those who are in favor of the ordinance change, would you raise your hand? Okay? Those who are against the ordinance change, would you raise your hand? Okay? All right, so what I'm gonna do is, each one has fifteen minutes, so what, if you, I saw the two, so let's go with the, let's go with the against first, and we'll let y'all come up at your, at your convenience here and speak about this, if you would. And I'm gonna time fifteen minutes, and whoever wants to talk for fifteen minutes is welcome to do so. And ladies first, Ms. Marnita, come on up. If you would give your name, please, although I got half of it anyway.
I'm Marnita Henderson, and that's probably all I need to know, say for y'all to know exactly what I'm gonna say.
And that's quite all right, so you please do say so.
Certainly appreciate y'all letting me come before you tonight. Couple thanks, thank you for the balanced budget, thank you for no tax increase. We appreciate the hard work. I'm just requesting that you respect the churches, the schools, and the funeral homes by not increasing, by not decreasing the distance from where you have alcohol sales and the establishment of the churches, the funeral homes and the schools. That's my main request.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Jerry Jefferson, I'm from Ward Two. And I'm speaking against, you know, like I say, the, the ordinance about bringing it closer to the church and to school. I mean, we, we as citizens of St. Louis, we should, you know, just leave the church sacred. I understand you want to change the percentage of alcohol, and you know, I'm not for that, but I can see what you're saying, and stay open an hour late, I can understand that. But what I don't understand is why do we have to interfere with the church? The church is a holy place. It's a place of worship. And I think, you know, we should just leave the ordinance. If we do anything, we should have the ordinance to go further away from the house of God instead of trying to get it close. I don't, I don't, myself don't see the need that, to why we should even consider coming closer to the house of the Lord. And so, and like I say, I'm from Ward Two, and I hope our newly-elected Alderman could see it this way too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson, I appreciate your comments. Okay? Anyone else who wants to speak against the alcohol ordinance change?
My name is Adam Turner, Ward Seven. Back in 2005, I was hit, it was a hit and run. Luckily, I had on the right clothes. I was hit, I tore the mirror off on the patio side. It didn't get nothing broke. The old crew say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And we got nine police officers, but it become a problem when people drink and then they wanna fight with the officers. And so, we have a hard enough time trying to keep peace. So it'd be best that if it ain't broke, don't try to fix it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, anyone else wishing to come speak against the change to the alcohol orders? Okay? Anyone wishing to come speak in favor of the alcohol orders? Mr. Yates, I seen, Michelle beat you to the, well, beat you to the podium here.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. And my name is Michelle Jones, I'm a resident of Ward One, and I am President of the Starkville Main Street Association. And I want to thank you for this public hearing, because this is what we asked you to do, to have a public hearing, to talk about the pros and cons of these three issues on, before you in this ordinance. I moved to Starkville in 1998, and when I moved here, you could drive across, crisscross across downtown after five o'clock because there, there was no nightlife downtown. And it took a very brave man, who was an ordained Deacon in the Baptist Church, to say we've got to bring restaurants into our downtown. And to do that, they, we have to have license to serve alcohol. And to do that, we've got to figure out how we can work with our houses of worship to make these things coexist. And because of Mac Breitlich, and because what he did all those years ago, and what some members of that board did with him, we have a vibrant downtown. We have a tourism that is based on culinary because we have great restaurants and local chefs. Our houses of worship are very important. The way they fit into our landscape is evidence of that. However, they can't control the redevelopment of our entire downtown area, our entire Main Street district. We're not talking about putting restaurants next door to churches. We're talking about decreasing the distance to meet the rest of the state so that we can have the opportunity to improve our economic standing so that next year's budget can be more robust and better to do the things we want to do in our community. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Yates.
Mr. Yates?
Mayor and Board of Alderman, I'm here to represent the Golden Triangle Restaurant Association. I have a letter in support of the changes, and also from the State Restaurant Association we've gotten. But just on the face of it, we're just, we're basically for the changes from economic standpoint, more jobs, more taxes, and just to open our, the business community up in Starkville to continue to grow. Because, I mean, we're growing, and this is, I just think it's a prudent thing to do. So locally, myself, John Bean with Eat With Us, The Grill, Harvey's, Robin Fant, Dave from the Dark Horse Tavern, Ty Timms, and I've talked to some others, but these are the guys that I just got on the letter today. And the Golden Triangle Restaurant Association is in support of the new alcohol, alcohol ordinance. We feel this change will allow our industry to continue to expand, creating jobs, opportunity and taxes. When, when an opportunity like this has been approved by the Board in the past, we feel it has always paid off for the city, for the industry, and for the community. We are ready to, we are ready and willing to do our part. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully. I think I have, I gave all y'all a letter, these letters. And then from the State Restaurant Association, Mike Cashin, who I've worked with, and I'm on the State Board, but he just was in agreement that, since I have been advised by local members of the Mississippi Hola Tally Restaurant Association, that the administration's considering revisions to the current alcohol ordinance. My understanding that the new regulations would adapt the minimums and the, and the changes that we spoke about. The MHRA fully supports and applauds the administration's efforts to create a restaurant-friendly environment. We are seeing in other cities that adopt similar language and changes and appreciate your interest and willingness to consider these, these changes, Mike Cashin. So then it's talking about across the state, kind of things are opening up and other places are getting developed. And so, I don't have a lot, a lot, more than that, just to say that we're definitely, the local restaurateurs, and especially the independents, are all in, in favor of the changes. So, thank y'all all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen. My name is Rosa Delumba. I am the owner of the Potpourrium located at 119 East Main Street. I am here today because I am in favor of us relooking this law, which I feel has really comes in the way of me doing business. Now, I don't know much about Starkville twenty years ago, five years ago, maybe even three years ago. All I know is where Starkville is now and the potential it has to grow. And for what I see, at least with my business, just to give you guys some data, we are looking to grow, and we've been growing fast. In six months, we have made over fifty thousand dollars just selling popcorn, and we have yet to introduce our new products. Now, we have also lost over twenty thousand dollars because the business has grown in ways where I didn't even plan it. We have this beautiful building, we've redone this building, and people are looking to book venues. So far, we've hosted weddings, we've hosted birthday parties, we also have hosted graduations. But as much as we've hosted, we've lost even more by not hosting. As soon as, as soon as people ask us about these events, as soon as I tell them we can't sell any alcohol, beer nor wine, they don't want to book. And so, the twenty thousand dollar figure that I'm giving you, just from my business particularly, that is not counting selling individual beer, a glass of wine, or a drink at all. That is just counting what I would have charged for them to rent the venue, and that's not counting the nine percent tax that the city would have gained from that as well. So I completely understand from a church aspect as to why they would not want alcohol to be so close. However, for me, I'll be quite honest, I wasn't even aware that there was churches or funeral homes right next to my front door because I am right on Main Street. I feel like this right here will really stunt the growth for Starkville to grow with the young community that it is attracting. Starkville is one of the rural areas where young people such as myself, I'm twenty-eight years old, are looking to settle. But when you have laws like this, which I personally feel like is outdated, it really just doesn't help business growth in general. I personally, on a personal note, was hit by a car thirteen years ago from a drunk driver. He was going fifty miles per hour, and I was crossing the street. So that's something I had to think about when I said, well, am I for this law or am I against it? So I started doing some research. And when Ms. Brew was running for mayor, she mentioned about having a late-night bus. We are open till midnight on Saturdays and Sundays, and believe, I'm sorry, on Fridays and Saturdays, believe it or not, till 2:00 a.m. on game weekends. And so, that's a concern of mine. And just having the late-night buses, and now that Starkville recently is doing Uber, I think that that will solve that problem, if not solve it, definitely help it in a major way. For us, being open till 12:00 a.m. helps us until about eight o'clock comes around. Eight o'clock comes around, people are no longer out with their children. Now, me, for my business, I don't want to be a place you can pick up a beer at five o'clock in the afternoon. We actually, I look and supplement a system where you can't get beer anywhere from us before nine o'clock. I'm looking to be able to turn into a lounge, be able to do open mic nights. That's another thing we tried, worth great for three to four weeks. Our average crowd said there's no beer. We went from having fifty people to having two to three people. So this is getting in the way of me doing business, and in growth in general, it is really limiting on what I can do. Now, we are all aware as business owners that a major part of our revenue come from the college students. They are looking for things to do. When I give them ideas, which I've taken polls where I ask, if we sold beer, would you come to a popcorn shop? Very weird question to ask students, and they said, of course. It's just for me, personally, as a business, I just think that it's just a huge, huge obstacle for businesses to be able to grow. We are not looking to set up carts in front of churches to sell beer. We're not looking to sell beer to children. I'm not even looking to sell beer during daytimes and on Sundays. I just want to be able to, me myself, as the business owner, make the decision, do I or do I not book this event? Can I do a wedding reception and make fifteen hundred dollars that day? Or should I just sell two, three hundred because I was unable to book that? Or in other situations where I'm unable to capitalize realistically on Bulldog Bash because I can only make so much popcorn for that day. Takes me about an hour to make a batch, which is sixteen quarts. So I can only capitalize so much because I'm unable, once again, to sell beer. I'm not looking to sell liquor, I'm just looking to sell beer and wine.
So you're on Main Street, correct?
I am.
And you're within, I guess, the 250th foot of a church?
I am.
And if it was amended, it would open up your property?
It definitely would. I am above a hundred. And so, it definitely would open up my property to just be able to offer more to Main Street, to be able to do that conversion from nine till 2:00 a.m., to offer a lounge feel, to be able to do open mic nights, to just be able to open events, or to be able to capitalize on events that Starkville brings, where I can be able to take something that is low-cost to me, and quite honest, less work for me to be able to try to make that dollar. When I, I, something I did not think about, and when I ran my numbers, I was very much shocked of how much business I lost. And these are just, this is just business that I was aware of, never mind business that I was not aware of. And so, I am definitely in favor of this. Just on another note, I think overall, it's going to stunt the growth on Main, on Main Street in general. You have that very weird gap where people are not renting, they're not going to rent the candy shop, something that big that would make a beautiful restaurant, but way too big for a candy shop. There are beautiful places here that would make beautiful restaurants and beautiful bars. For example, I love the guest room, and I see the place off of Lafayette being one of those places where, it's right next to where Last Man Standing, maybe not big enough for much, but it would be nice for a little, cute little bar to go down there. I believe that business for one is good for business for all. Us being able to say we're open and promote till 12:00 a.m. will help most, it'll help Restaurant Tyler, it'll help, it'll help everyone. We're in that very weird gap where the traffic does not come to us, people will not cross the street to come to get popcorn because we simply have no alcohol to offer. Quite realistically, it is such a huge revenue for any restaurant owner. And as a restaurant owner of a business that's grown much faster than I originally planned, and I'm very proud of, I need to be able to grow with my business. And speaking on notes of other restaurant owners or cutesy little shops like myself that are looking to come to Starkville, I could see this being a reason why they wouldn't. Because if this was something that I thought my business would grow into, and that catering to the college crowd, this would be such a big deal, I personally probably wouldn't have came to Starkville, to be quite honest. I would have looked to bring my business to Oxford, I would have looked to bring my business to places where I'm able to grow. Now, I've been given different suggestions from people such as, well, why don't you ask the church to sign a petition that it's okay to sell alcohol? Personally, as a business owner who pays a lot for rent to be on Main Street, I feel like that's not something I should have to do. I feel that as long as I'm within that hundred feet, that has worked for plenty of places in Mississippi, as long as I'm within that, and I respect the laws that are already in place, such as not as not selling alcohol, and even extend it to the point not selling it during hours where children and elderly people are about our community. We, I'm looking to double, triple, quadruple my profits, my revenue, bring more to the community. And unfortunately, I'm unable to do that. I am young, and...
Can I stop you just for a second? I want to see, because we're about to run out of time, and I'm giving you a lot. Is there anyone else out there who wants to? Okay, I do have someone else. Can you wrap it up real quick?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just pretty much want to say that you guys should really capitalize on people who are young, who have the energy, and who are willing to put in the time and the efforts to bring more to Starkville to help it grow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, before she departs, may I ask her a question, only three questions. What is your name?
My name is Rosa Delumba.
And exactly where is your business located? Tell me how I can get here if I walk out of the door and the location and the address.
Okay, so if you walk out of here, and I am towards the left, you pass the courthouse, Occasions, L.A. Green, and I am that next building.
So, you go to the courthouse, we're walking toward Cadence Bank, you pass Occasions, and you're the next building past...
I believe, actually, no, there are two buildings, the Law Office and Doodle Bugs, and then there is Lafayette.
But you're on that north, northeast corner of that...
Yes.
Mayor, yield.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the board. My name is Thomas Gregory, and I'm perhaps the newest resident of Starkville that's in attendance at the meeting tonight. My wife and I bought a house and closed on it just last week. So, we're excited to be in Starkville. We come from Greenwood, where for the previous eight years, I served as the city's chief administrative officer. I am a city planner by trade, and I study issues like this and their impact on local communities. I didn't bring any hard and fast data with me tonight, but I can say anecdotally that I believe that the proposed changes to this ordinance would have a positive impact on the Starkville community. Reducing the distance between restaurants and churches, schools, funeral homes, and childcare facilities would open the door for many properties, specifically in downtown Starkville, to be able to open new restaurants. That in turn would create new jobs, new sales taxes that could be used to provide city services like parks, playgrounds, streets, and sidewalks. It would also be a draw for tourism because it would help Starkville develop, continue to develop as a culinary destination in the state. Another part of the ordinance that I'm very much in favor of is increasing the ABV percent for beer sales to 8%. When my wife and I go out to eat dinner, I often enjoy drinking a pint of cold craft beer with my meal. And nothing against Bud Light, but I know there are many people that enjoy porters and stouts, IPAs, pale ales, just like I do. And those beers are currently, the majority of them are not allowed to be sold in Starkville restaurants because of their higher ABV percentages. So, I think increasing that 8% would allow Starkville restaurants to be able to serve all of the beers that the state of Mississippi, Mississippi currently allows to be sold. Now, the 1:00 a.m. component of the law, I could give or take. There was a time in my life when I probably would have appreciated the extra hour around town. But these days, I'm in bed by 10:00 o'clock. So, again, that's not something that I'm for or against. But I think on the whole, the proposed changes to the ordinance would be a good thing for the Starkville community and the Starkville economy. And I would respectfully request that the board consider making those changes. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. All right, anyone else? All right, I will close it as a public hearing, and we will have discussion among board members if you're so inclined. Anyone wish to talk about this issue?
I appreciate everyone being patient tonight and sticking through this to the public hearing section. I was looking forward to hearing from, to see what everyone had to say on this topic. I've pretty much had a bead on my back, it seems like, for the past month on this topic. I've learned more about it than I ever thought I would. It's three cogs in this wheel, so to speak. The first is going to be the component, the 8%, which the governor signed, Governor Bryant signed into law back in 2012. On July 1st of 2012, the city of Starkville started selling it to all the groceries and all the restaurants, and they're currently selling it now, walk down the street. That's a clerical update we need to do to our law. It should have been done two boards ago. It just failed to slip through the cracks, as did a couple of other things we've recently corrected. So, I think that's something that's a no-brainer. We need to address that. Otherwise, we're basically going to tell the restaurants to quit selling what you've been selling for the last five years, which is legal across the state, which probably creates other issues for us. As far as the extended hours, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure. As Mr. Gregory just said, I'm in bed by then most evenings unless something unusual's going on, but I'm usually in bed at that point. I do have college-age kids. I've got one here in town who turns 21 Sunday. So, I'm cognizant of what goes on and what could go on after those hours. So, I think he's got some of his friends here tonight. They chose not to speak, but I believe they're supportive of the extended hours. As far as the distances to the restaurants, distance to the churches that the restaurants could locate, someone mentioned to me last week, I was talking about the same subject, and they said, "You know, Starkville doesn't have a lot of bars, but a lot of restaurants that serve alcohol." You know, you go to Harvey's, Veranda, and Restaurant Tyler, and the various other places around town. You know, I think, I said, "Yeah, you're right." You know, most of them, family atmosphere, you know, it's later on in the night, they turn to a bar scene for the younger crowd. But if we, I've seen the voids on the map. I'm not sure how many of y'all looked at the maps of the downtown Main Street area, 182 corridor that everyone would love to revitalize. There's some voids that are impacted due to the current 250-foot rule. And there's some properties that some folks have, over the past few years, have attempted to try to lure restaurants in, but they cannot under the current system. And I'm not saying I'm a proponent one way or the other. I'm just stating the facts. As I've learned, I've been sitting on the Main Street board and hearing some of the issues that they're encountering, some of the larger churches downtown, and that's the main area that we're, I think this has came up, it came up during the last board casual conversations about it, this is the first time it came forward. The campuses are so big right now, it's measured from the main sanctuary. And I think that's a lot of pieces that people don't understand. They think church property. Well, that's not the case. It's measured from this main sanctuary. Under the 250-foot rule right now, at First Baptist, you've got Rosie Baby across the track from the youth center. You've got two buildings on Jackson that are about to open. I'm not sure if there are going to be restaurants or whatever, but they could sell alcohol because they are beyond 250 under the current law from the sanctuary. Now, they're buffered, so the 100-foot rule is really not going to impact them because they're so large. Same goes for First United Methodist, you've got the Funeral Home across the street, you've got City Hall to the north, and so they're not impacted. You've got First Prez that has, their property is so large, and correct me if I'm wrong, First Prez's property is so big, did, I think it reaches across, the distance would reach across to the northern western Ottawa area. And then you've got some other areas, I think, where the dark horse is, that since they've been there, I think a childcare may be located there...
Childcare.
And a church.
And a church.
After the dark horse was there.
Dave, I'm sorry, Ricks.
Yeah, Ricks, I'm sorry. So, I'm just, you know, there's some information that, you know, everyone's not talking about. But if we could get some more restaurants on Main Street, I think that would be the good common good for the city. I was down in Habsburg a couple of weeks ago, passed through about 9:00 at night, and it was a ghost town downtown. I think I saw one restaurant that appeared to be newer, but everything seemed like there were law offices and architects and things like that at 5:00, they were on carpet. And to be a vital downtown, and if we're going to have retailers downtown, you need to have a lot of foot traffic, and restaurants create foot traffic. And with the T zoning that went into effect a few years ago, we're getting higher density downtown. We've got all these properties that are coming in, more people are going to be living downtown. You need more restaurants to feed more people, there's going to be more foot traffic, and that promotes retail, which promotes sales tax, which helps our...
Wine man.
And I'm, and there's no secret, I've always said I'm going to be pro-business. And I think this board has tried to, has said that, and in keeping with that, that's most likely the way I'm feeling. It's time to vote.
May I be recognized?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I'm not going to get into any discussion. I'm going to let everybody wait. I look like I'm filling it, and I'm filling it. I look like the board is ready to vote. I don't want anybody to speak for the board, that's what the board is ready to do, and I don't want anybody to speak for the Vice Mayor. And I'm going to save my comments. We're going to wait until the 19th, and I'm going to get recognized. But I'm filling it. I'm not going to get tempted into this, into this miniature discussion tonight, and we'll just wait until the end. But I'm filling it. You know, it's more than beer and whiskey in this community. So, we'll finish this conversation at our next meeting on the 19th of September 2017. It's more than beer, whiskey, and alcohol. This community is not about beer, whiskey, and alcohol. So, may I yield the floor to that. Mayor will be recognized on the next three subjects.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
If I can be recognized. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate those who do come and participate, and those that come here, that are here for it or against it. Certainly appreciate your being here. I appreciate the big crowd tonight for all the issues. And I certainly appreciate our businesses. I know we've had several businesses speak and associations speak, and we've got a new business, it sounds like downtown. I want you all to know how much the city of Starkville appreciates you, no matter what, and that I think, no matter whether we agree or disagree on things up here, that we're going to work very hard to make your business successful because it benefits this entire community. And I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all right. That concludes that matter for this evening. We'll be taking the matter up for the second public hearing and then a potential vote on it at the meeting of the 19th. All right, next item on the agenda is the claim stocket.
Same vote.
I'm sorry, I have a motion for, by Alden Parker for the claims, to approve the claim stocket. Do I have a second? Second for the claim stocket?
Second.
Thank you, Alden, Mr. Parker. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Should be set to vote of 5 to 1. Sorry, I forgot about Alden Walker. The motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Police Department. We have an update on the status of the Police Department renovation. Chief Nichols, Mr. Schaefer, and I think Sally's going to join him, and Weathers Construction is here. All right, Chief, I'll let you lead on.
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Chief.
Members of the board. We come here today just to give you a brief presentation of the progress on the Police Department. We do have a few new photographs that we'd like to show. As the mayor mentioned, we have Mr. Gary Schaefer here, and Sally Zahn, and Mr. Mark Malloy from Weathers Construction. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Sally.
Tonight, we have just a few additional images to show you of progress on the building. You remember, the image on the left is where we started, and the image on the right is what it looks like on Lincoln Street right now. This is an image of the roll call room, which was the former, well, the original stage in the building. You can see that not only have all the walls and floors and ceilings and lights and everything been installed, but we now have furniture and appliances in place and ready to go. This is a view from the other side of that room. You can see the original stage house lights and light trough are all functional. This is an, there's the space right outside of the chief's office. You can see that original window and the original concrete wall has been restored. This is where Donna was at. And you can see the filing cabinets and furniture and everything's fully installed, and you can see that original deck structure is now eliminated. And that continues through much of the second floor, which is now complete. We really like how that original structure is going to be visible all the way through that second floor, and you can see at the end of the hallway, a little peek of that original proscenium arch. These are all detectives and investigator offices. The corridor that cuts through the center of the second floor, you can see the truss pieces kind of crisscross up at the top of the walls, and you can see the emergency operations center at the end of the hallway. We've got daylight all the way through the building, and you can see the new furnitures there, big conference room. This will be the center in the event that emergency operations are needed, and they have all the infrastructure there that they need to run an operation from the Police Department.
Sally and I today completed the second walkthrough of the punch list items for the building and for the site. And we're pleased to say that the building and the site are substantially complete. And the substantial completion form with the attached punch list items has been delivered to the mayor's office. Now, no one was there, so it's on your chair somewhere, but as soon as you sit down, you'll find it. And so, but that form states that the building is ready for its intended use. And so, we are happy to say that it is ready to be occupied at whatever schedule the Starkville Police are ready to move in on.
May I be recognized?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Schaefer, just a series of things, the mayor, I'll announce what I'm doing on the floor. Why do we have an issue on the, a matter on the agenda tonight, which to do next, to do two additional boardings? Tell me what's the justification on that matter? You're the project manager, and I'm speaking for the taxpayer, so just bear with me. And I have a job to do. Tell me why that matters on the agenda, to do two additional boardings? And what do we mean by boarding? What's the purpose of that? What's the justification of that? Because when Weathers came back before sometime in July, the board was informed that that sump pump that Weathers agreed to put in, which was put in on the July, on about July 28th, 2017, that would stop all of the water coming into the building. And Weathers agreed, which they did, to a year warranty. And the information that I read in the packet was, given all that rain event during the first part of August, there were 14 days of raining. In other 14, water continued to come in the building for 13 days. That's what was in my packet. That was in your report, you signed that letter. So, I want to know why are we going to have these two boardings? What's the purpose of the boardings by this, and what's the purpose of that?
Okay, yes. The, when we last met, we said that we witnessed water coming in, in that northeast corner. And we cut a hole in the concrete, we found water at that area. And when we prevented the water at that time from coming in that hole by vacuuming it out during a rain event, there was no other water coming in in the basement. We put the sump pump there. Since then, that two-week period in August, it rained 13 of the 14 days. Now, I didn't say the rain came in every day, but during that period, we found there were other places that also had leaks in that basement. It didn't leak before, when we were observing that one spot, but with that major rain event over that long period of time, we found other places that the water came in. And so, the belief is that there is water pressure during major rain events underneath the slab. We know that must be true because we already had the water coming up where we put the sump pump. The engineer's recommendation, the civil engineer's recommendation, is to do a boarding which cuts a hole through the concrete in two different locations. Then he will be able to measure, during major rain events, he'll be able to measure the amount of water that is possibly building up underneath that basement. And then he would make his recommendation with that information.
At this point in the process, why are we just now determining about... At this point in the process, why are we just now determining, uh, about that we need to try to fix this? Why was this not done early in the process? Why was this not done early in the construction? I remember back in day one, when it was represented to us that this building's gonna be gutted down, there was nothing in the, um, agreement or the representation to this governing body that we're gonna be getting a building with water coming into it. Now, of course, even though with that 13 days of that 14-day raining, the water's still coming in. Where is the water coming from?
That's exactly what the borings are going to test and try to establish.
Well, why was not this not done while we had a, a blanket foundation before we got it with a roof on this building?
Well, the water has been in there for the last 30 years.
Well, we were not told that when it, when it got approved. There's $5.4 million to my recollection. We were not told by no water in this building for, for 30 years. When we voted on this project, we were told that we would have us a good first-class building. And I do not count a good first-class building with approving a certificate of completion with water coming out of places that we don't know where it's coming from.
No, we were told that the water was coming under the door on the east side and the water was coming through the window that was in the basement on the east side. We were told that by city officials. We were told that by the police officials that knew that water was coming in those locations and was in that basement. But there was a door there that no one, no, no, many people, that, were you ever down in that basement?
Well, I don't have to be down there. Who hired you to be there?
No, no, no. I'm saying over the last 30 years, the last mayor in eight years had never opened the door and even knew that basement was down there. So the people that happened to be down in that basement, and when there's wa, there's no water in that basement right now. It is absolutely dry. So there are times when the water does get into that basement and other times, there's no water in it. But we were told that the water came through the window and through the door. And we accepted that because we saw the water during rain events come in there. We fixed the window, closed it. We fixed the door and low and behold, water still, as we now see, in major rain events starts to come through those other areas.
Well, there's no guarantee to us. Now, we're told, uh, that the sump pump would cure any water issue we have. So even if we pay this engineering firm, uh, to do the boring, there's still no representation to me as a professional, uh, that this is gonna solve the water problem. So it look like we're being, uh, asked to accept a building for substantial completion with an outstanding water problem. Cause it been my experience is once you accept the certificate of completion, we just move on to other things. So I don't understand why we're being asked tonight to do that. I'm, I'm, I'm just addressing this all in one while you're up here tonight. Uh, you know, I mean, cause there's no guarantee. We got all these engineers in the state of Mississippi. You got Mississippi State is all this great school out there. I just don't understand why we about being asked tonight to accept a building with this. Now, let me say this, Chief. Chief, stand up here to the podium a minute. Chief Nichols, come up here a minute. Let me, let, let me say this, Chief. Uh, this is not about you, Chief. You doing a great job, okay? You do, I appreciate you. I'm just giving you, I'm gonna give you some praises here. You doing a great job. I wanna thank all of your men and women who do a great job.
Yes, sir.
And I think they all, if I may have everybody's attention, please. I, I think all of you know my commitment to this project. And I'm not looking for no flowers. I'm not looking for no roses. I'm not looking for a bouquet of them. But my commitment is goes way back to day one when I offered the motion, which I don't do, to increase taxes for this building. That's my passion. That's my heart of this project. That's why I'm so strong about this. This is no show, form, or fashion. I offered a motion to, uh, for a one-mill tax increase and Chief, and I thank you, men, uh, all y'all doing a great job. Y'all deserve the building. But I want you to construe these comments tonight because I want y'all to have the best of the best. And I am disappointed in the city of Starkville, Mississippi, that we are about to be asked tonight, which I believe this board is gonna approve, a certificate of completion of a $5.4 million project of hard-earned taxpayers' money for a building that has leaking water in it. That's a shame. Now, the question is, if I translate this into my own personal matter, now just ask yourself, if I can just get complete attention and put all this text and stuff down in this room so we can listen to what's going on in here. If, if I, this matter was personal, if I were being asked to approve a certificate of completion for my own personal funds, for my personal project, even though I got all this extravagant Hollywood furniture here, it looks so beautiful, so well-done, but yet, and I'm gonna occupy this other part just as, as a, a living area, and then in my basement, I got water leaking? You gonna ask me would I approve a certificate of completion? Now, we got to put this in, this, these taxpayers' monies have to be treated like it's our own money. That's the passion. That's the driving point here. I've been at this discussion at this table about this police department from day one. I've been on this board for, going on 25 years and we have worked hard and labor hard to get to this point. And then you're gonna give me a building with water in it? Did you expect me to approve this, Chief? No disrespect to you, but this is very passionate. No, I'm not gonna vote for a certificate of completion. That's a disgrace to these hard-working men and women. They don't need to be in no building no water in it. Even though I don't vote for it, I'm with you, men. Y'all doing a great job. You risk your lives 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but the city of Starkville has failed you as much as we discussed this project. We turned down a new location. We turned down Cadence Bank. And this board on a 43 vote voted to accept the, the former city hall for the police department. And then we're gonna spend $5.4 million. The vice mayor offers a motion to increase the taxes, which I never do. And you gonna ask me to vote for a certificate of completion? And we have gotten the, uh, general contractor to agree to put a sump pump in this location. Now, we're being asked tonight to spend another $1,200 for boring and we still don't know that's gonna solve the problem. I just cannot in good conscience vote to accept this building. I have deliberated on this thing. I have slept on this thing. I have thought about this matter. Chief, I am with you. You doing a great job. The, uh, the, uh, your captains are doing, all your, your entire staff, all of you are doing a great job. But I am not going to be remiss in my duties in addressing this issue. I'm not gonna gloss over it. I'm not gonna just skim over it. But there's a problem. I hope that we can get it fixed, but as of right now, it is not fixed. We get the sump pump in and then come after that water's still just spewing in the building. We don't know where it's coming from. We, we've gone from a foundation. The time to fix a foundational problem, I'm not a contractor, I'm a lawyer. The time to fix that is before you get the roof up. And then all of a sudden, I can't believe that we cannot, with all these great minds, with all this great university out there, with all these great engineers, with all these great engineering firms in the city of Starkville, we cannot figure out where water is coming from. That is a disgrace. Now, I know there's some tough medicine, but sometimes I take medicine just for my health. And we all need some good medicine sometime. This just, this is, I'm sorry for taking so much time, Mayor. This is very passionate with me. You know, I've been discussing this thing over 20-some years now. And then you're gonna give these police officers a, a building with water in it for $5.4 million. Now, I don't care if they don't ever go down there for an office space. They don't need to have no building with water in it. That's ridiculous. Tupelo, Mississippi, done built a brand-new police station for $10 million. I, I need to go up there and have the grand opening with them. I think I'm asking the mayor shelter. Let me go and see his building. It's just a shame. Gonna approve a building with water in it. What a mess that is. Would you approve, uh, write a check on your account for $5.4 million if it was your house? If it was your building? If it was your project? You don't have to answer that question. I already know the answer to it. Because if you tell me no, I know you're not being honest with me. And this same money belongs to our hard-working taxpayers. That's who we were elected to represent. We raised our right hands. We swore to tell the truth and nothing but truth. And we say we're gonna represent them to the best of our ability. I'm, I'm just really disappointed in the city of Starkville. And the city of Starkville includes myself too. We let this project, I'm not passing the blame. This is not on the police department. This don't even pertain to the police office. They just a victim of this. They are, uh, you can't blame them. They are tired. They are sick and tired of, of being tired. They ready to get into a new building. And they just tired of all this talk. But I'm here to be their voice. I'm here to be the voice for the people, the voice for the taxpayers. We got to do a better job with these buildings. Maybe next time, we need, we don't need to have no renovated building. We need to buy, we need to have us a brand-new building from the ground. We don't have to worry about no reports where the water was in there 50 years ago, 30 years ago, 15 years ago. I'm told one thing, when we get ready to do construction, then we're getting that water, you know, water been there 30 years, been there 40 years, 50 years, whatever, how many years you wanna come up with. I'm just tired of it. And the taxpayers deserve to do better. I know I've talked along, but this subject, Chief, I've been ta, I've been here, I've been here ever since this discussion came up. And I, I thank my colleagues for being patient with me. If they had been here this long, they probably tired of it too. They be tired of it too. I'm sorry to take so much of their time. This is my only subject tonight. I hate to take up this time. I know everybody's time is important, but Chief, this is important to me. I'm sorry for taking up everybody's time, but, but we got to do, the point from here on, uh, whoever's involved with projects for the city, for them at this table or not, I may not be here for the next project. Who knows? But as a taxpayer and decision-maker, we got to do a better job. Gonna send these people here. This thing, this water can produce health hazard. May get claimed for some type of, get these person injuries lawyers all, all geared up for, for claims against the city of Starkville, health issues. People are worried. Water's selling in. Next rain event may give us six or seven, eight inches of water. Make, no tell where it may go to. Water may keep coming out. May have to do more borings. We don't know. I mean, because when we, I'm about to wrap it up, Mayor, but when we get ready to have a dedication, uh, an opening, uh, that, that, uh, indicates, that's a high moment. A dedication is an acknowledgement that we're excited. We are proud to go into what we're about to go into, Chief. Chief, I, I, I'm just not at that point. I, you know, I'm not on that, that high. That, I'm not on top of the world on this thing. I can't get there. But I'm, I'm with you now. I mean, you feel me, Chief? I'm with you. I'm, I'm for you. But I cannot get there because with water in the building, man, we're not talking about $540. We're talking about $5.4 million. I know we just talking about that space, but it's still tainted. But y'all are great people. We're gonna make the best out of it, Chief. But I would, men, men, uh, I would have been remiss if I had to say, but, but all this is good. I'm trying to make for the betterment in the future. So hopefully while this conversation, I working together, we'll, we'll hopefully, we'll eliminate this. We'll eliminate it because y'all are so deserved. We are so proud of all of you. Tell your entire staff, Chief, that the vice mayor said these things, but you tell me from my heart. I got to tell you, it is in my heart that, that I appreciate you. I'm, I'm proud of you. I don't have any comments. Y'all, y'all making the city of Starkville good, but it's not on you. It is on us, not them, but us. All of us. Everybody who's been involved because we were the decision-makers. We all should have done a better job. If we were not gonna do a better job, then we should have spent $10 million. I would have made the motion to do it right. I rather have made a motion to have a $10 million project and water in the building on four, $5.4. You know, this just gives me great discomfort. So Mayor, I'm sorry for taking so much time at your meeting, but I had to say it. I mean, I've been wrestling for this for a long time. It took us a long time, over 20-plus years, Chief, to get here. I mean, if it had not been for that, I'm not looking for no show, no form, no fashion. I just, man, it is in my heart. I mean, I had to say it. I, I wouldn't have been myself, man. And, um, you know, I hope we can correct it. I hope we can do it. Mayor, you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alright, uh, Mr., I'll get to, I'll get to, uh, just a second. Uh, Mr. Pritchard.
Yes, sir.
The borings. Let's get a little more detail on the borings. Would you be so kind as to share with us your thoughts on the borings?
Well, I'll, I'll share a couple of things.
Okay.
And I'm glad for any of you that hadn't met me with Pritchard Engineering. Uh, a couple of times, just in what I've heard. Uh, back when the project was in infancy, as I understand, there was a, a matter of water coming in the basement. It was felt to be filtration through windows, block. As a matter of diligence, we originally went in that basement, cut a hole in the floor, and drilled seven and a half feet as a precautionary measure to see if we had any groundwater problem.
Like straight down seven and a half feet?
We went down seven and a half feet below the bottom of the basement. Those are in the geotechnical report that I gave Mr. Schaefer at the time. This won't mean much to you, but the moisture contents were about 10%, 13%, 15%. It was like popcorn.
Is that a good, that's, those are good numbers?
Those are good numbers. It's dried popcorn beneath the basement. It's an antiquated system of storm drain around that building. There are antiquated sewers, antiquated storm drains, roof drains, piping, floor drains. Those things collapse. They stop up. Things happen with time. That's what's occurred here. So what I proposed, Gary asked me to come in, help him get a resolution, and I did. Wasn't part, part, Mr. Malloy, the sump pump solution wasn't even brought into the conversation then. But Gary says, "That's not working like we need it to. Come in, tell us what to do." I can't solve the problem if I don't know where it's coming from. You can't fix a problem if you don't know why. This happened. So that's the reason I've recommended a couple more borings. We'll try to strategically place them on west side, east side, north side. Try to figure out where this water's coming from, where the vents is coming from. We'll monitor it for a while. And when we've got a little bit of data, and some survey data, we'll propose a solution. Now, it could be, uh, what we call an active solution, where we basically let the water come in, catch it in a trench, pump it out, like you would do with a sump drum, sump pump. Or it may be a more passive solution, where we try to stop it from getting there to begin with. But the truth of the matter is, I can't fix it till I know where it's coming from. That's what our proposal is for.
Where was your first drilling, the seven and a half feet down?
It was in the basement. We did three outside, but I'm gonna say probably just in the central portion of the basement.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
I'd have to go, look at my notes to see how far from which wall. But we did three borings outside. We actually did one in the basement. Again, as a precautionary measure to see if we had a groundwater problem there. There's nothing there. And that's a matter of record in the report.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
My opinion is...
Ben, could I add one more thing?
Sure.
Just after the last big rain events in August, and Gary had been involved in this, three days after the last rain, not immediately after, not the next day, the next day, but three days after the next rain, you could look in the storm drains outside, you still have water coming through those storm drains. That's infiltration. That's leakage. That's things that's coming from stuff on the ground that's just leaked into your system.
My opinion, and I'm not gonna get into the politics of why I voted for this building in, in the past, but it has become, I don't, are we over the $5.4 million price tag at this point? We're still under. Um, it sounds like there's lots of work to be completed. I know I would feel more comfortable, uh, signing the substantial completion certificate after these borings. We've got a, everybody knows there's a category four, category five hurricane, everything I've seen as of an hour. It's got it coming right up the Gulf of Mexico somewhere. Good rain should be here in a week or two. I don't know if accident or design, if that gets us, you know, a good boring reading. But it sounds like the dirt dries popcorn, so it's gotta be. I mean, the windows, have they been all, has that been alleviated? Or is that, so it's just?
Water appears. The water that we see appears to be coming up through the slab.
Only in?
Where there's cracks in the slab. And, and so where, it only came up in that corner for the time that we were monitoring it. That's why we cut the hole, verify the waters there. That's why we put the sump pump there. So we thought, oh, we had it. And that sump pump held from the next series of rains until we had a much bigger rain event. And all of a sudden, it started leaking from the west side and the other ones right in the middle. Uh, just a little crack in the concrete slab, but the water comes up, you know, just, but again, we're, we're, this is an unoccupied space that we're talking about. There's not an officer in this occupied space. But on the other hand, you know, when that water comes up, it... But on the other hand, you know, when that water comes up, it appears to be a pressure situation.
Ben, what's probably happened is the basement had a floor drain at one time, and it was some exterior drain. As I understand it now, the floor drains collapse from ten, twelve feet up, that's about as far as we could go with it. So as water leaks down from the hill, from the north, from the east, traditionally it had a way out. It got onto the building, around the building, now it doesn't have a way out, so it just builds up.
Well, you know, again, my opinion is that maybe we wait for this completion. I'd like to see the boring results. I think the city, our catch is this piece of paper. And after that, you know, it becomes our responsibility, much like a dedication of a road or something like that. We got good rain coming, is this something you think you'll get this done between now and next week at this time?
Had this twelve hundred dollars not turned into an issue, we would have done it last week, or the week before. I told Gary in an email, we would have done it the next day in it.
And I know nothing of this, but the last thing, can y'all not test that water to see, is there a water?
It has to test that it is, that it is rainwater.
Not any storm, I mean, it's not any sewer, it's not any?
But what you'll have, it may not be sewer, but sewers traditionally backfill with gravels and sands that are more permeable than the clay, that transmit water, so water follows those conduits through the ground.
What would you do if it was your own building, if this was Pritchard, you know, engineering?
I'd go hire a good soil engineer to help me figure out what to do. No, seriously, I think you need a boring. There's some other techniques involved, like ground penetration radar, the methods get more expensive as you go up. Having been in it, having looked at it, with water standing there, saw the slums, saw this and that, I think with a couple of borings, some survey work, and some monitoring, we may need to watch the time through the next storm drain, through the next line. We'll probably install what we call a pedometer, which is just a simple PVC pipe, that will measure water levels. When we get two minutes rain, it'll come up a little bit, we'll see what happens, might go down. But if we can get direction and source, then we can come up with a solution.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman, little.
I appreciate the vice mayor's comments and his passion on this project. It is disappointing to see that we've got, you know, issues with water in basically a brand-new building. I've just stood down in that area, and I smelled, you know, the moisture and mildew, mold, whatever, that had already whipped up into the sheet rock, the new sheet rock installed there. It's unfortunate that the sump pump that we've tried did not work, but we can't throw our hands up and walk away from the building at this point. We've got to, we're in too deep. And with that...
Alderman, hang on just a second. Can you get it? Okay, thank you. All right, Alderman, little, go ahead.
With that, I think there's no question that we need to proceed with Mr. Pritchard's recommendation of doing the soil borings, and hopefully we can find out what the cause is and look to remedy it for a small amount of money, I hope. I hope it doesn't just continue to escalate and continue to be an ongoing problem. But I'm concerned, as the vice mayor's already voiced, that, you know, it is disappointing. You don't want to go in there, and every time you walk in that old building, you smell moisture, mold, must. And I don't want to see these guys going to a brand-new building and smelling something like that. Even if it's out of sight, you're gonna be able to smell it. The HVAC ductwork goes through there and everything else. So we need to be sure we get it right, and if this is the first step in that direction of getting it rectified, I think we need to take that step.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, little.
Mr. Schaefer, had you found this water problem during reconstruction and remodeling during that whole process, would you still have needed the borings, do you think, kind of through how this played off? Meaning, would it still potentially have needed to be an alternative, and you would have needed the twelve hundred dollars to do so?
Absolutely, this is, in the contract, we considered a unforeseen item. So the water, as we understood it going into, it was coming through the window of the door, and we addressed the water as we understood it. But now, the water is clearly coming in different ways, and at different times and different events. So yes, that's why, in one respect, it's a non-contractual problem right now, in my opinion, because it was not known as we started the project.
So it would have been the same money spent, had you found it?
That's right.
Thank you.
Alderman Vaughn.
Chief, thank you so much. Sergeant, Lieutenant, all of you, what do y'all think? We don't have to live in there. What do y'all think? What do you all think? We don't have to go in there, we don't have to live.
Are you asking me?
Actually, you and your guys, what do y'all think?
I think that these men and women standing behind me deserve a place to stay. For over a year now, we've been displaced. I use the word displaced, I don't use it lightly. We're in seven, eight different locations. It's hard.
Time to go home.
It's hard. When you talk about span of control, when you're supervising, it's hard. I got people, personnel, to be honest, I hadn't seen in months, because they're in a different location. And I'm busy doing something over here and there, over here. We need to be in a location, all together, serving the city of Starkville. How that gets done, that's up to you. But I'm giving you our needs, and more so, more so for the people standing behind me, because I got twenty-five years in this. I'm at my last days. These people gotta be in this building. These people need a place to stay. These people need a place to work out of, where they can be proud of. We talked about Tupelo, somebody mentioned Tupelo.
Vice mayor did, yes, sir.
They got a place they can be proud of. Why can't Starkville be that same city? Why can't we have somewhere we can be proud of?
Me, I recognize.
What's gonna happen if we get into this, and we do these borings, and we need another million dollars? Are we gonna stay displaced? That's the reality. That's the reality, that we might need another million dollars. Who knows? We don't know. But what I do know is this, we're still gonna be displaced. Do we deserve that? The mayor got out and rode with us Saturday night. She see the work we do. These guys work hard. For what? To look forward to something that we're never gonna get? It's like putting a steak in front of a hungry dog. He just chasing it, and never gets it. That's what these men and women are going through every day. I feel like less than a leader when I get asked every staff meeting, chief, when are we moving in the building? And I could just look at them and can't give them an answer. That's where I'm at. So I don't know whether we should be in this building. What I do know is, we need to be in a building. We're all of us together.
Alderman Vaughn.
Captain, Lieutenant, Sergeant, what y'all think? I want to hear from y'all, but from the chief, I want to hear from you guys.
Captain, come on. Get to the desk, come on.
Captain, what do you think?
Vice mayor.
Yes, sir.
Chief couldn't have said it better. It's been difficult. It's been, you know...
Catch Mr. Pritchard.
It's been, it's been difficult, you know, being displaced. It's something that we've never had to do before. You know, when you're talking about administrations and supervising, and, you know, it's something that you have to, you have to be able to, you know, see your meaning, and have to be able to work with your meaning. And, you know, unless we're having a staff meeting, or calling them over to the office, or, you know, some other thing, that's the way it's been for you. And vice mayor, you know, I know you're passionate, and, you know, I couldn't be more proud of the speech that you gave. I really couldn't. And I love you for it. But we are displaced, and something has got to happen. We can't just stay like we are forever.
Thank you, Captain.
Mayor. Mayor, vice mayor.
Thank you.
Rest of the board members. I definitely agree with chief, captain. I think it's a very disgruntled situation. We preach every day about morale. And I think there's a lot of officers that morale is down, just because they're not in a place where they can see the chief, they can see the captains, they can see other lieutenants, other members of the Starkville Police Department that's in different division. We never get a chance to see them unless it's a staff meeting or some meeting of importance. I definitely agree with captain, mayor, vice mayor, everything you said makes sense. It's reality. I wouldn't want to, you know, buy a four point five million, well, five point four million dollar house, and I'm having issues with it. But at the end of the day, you know, we need a place, and we got a place, but it's like we don't have a place because we're not in it. Alderman, Carver, definitely agree with you. There's nobody on the panel that we don't agree with. It's just that this day and time, waiting a year or a little over a year, and we still having the same answers as, well, we getting the same answers, and the answer is, we don't know. And that's what we getting every time we ask, that we don't know. But thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn, he still has floor. Alderman Vaughn.
One more.
Let me get to the dinner, I got to get Mr. Pritchard, I give him a floor. First of all, I want to thank y'all for this. I mean, I know that this has been a long battle for everyone. First of all, I stand by my chief, one hundred percent, everything he said. Y'all, we've been here, we've done this seventeen-plus years. We finally got to an opportunity where we tried or made a decision. Whether it's a good decision or a bad decision, we own it now. This is coming from a guy who owned a house on Greensboro Street. Love the historical district, love the setting, love the antebellum, I love the stories. But I bought an old house, y'all. We ain't changing that here. We're still gonna have issues. We're still gonna have things, and I completely agree with what you said, vice mayor. I'm with him a hundred percent, I'm with y'all. As everyone has said, I'm trying not to reiterate everything that everyone else has said, but y'all, we're tired. And I don't want to go into this building either with it being mildewed, and, you know, are we gonna address this constantly? But the fact is, we made a decision. We're not going back on that, we can't change that, so let's own it, whatever we gotta do.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn.
Mr. Pritchard.
Yes, sir.
If we bore those two holes, if you bore those two holes in there, where we go from there?
Again, we'll do the borings, we'll take some samples. We'll likely put in what we call, we'll do basically a piece of PVC, we'll some slots or holes in it, and we'll let the water come up, as it comes up, rains go down, so we can see what's happening there, if we have one. We'll get that, we'll take some elevations on the sumps, some elevations outside, may possibly add an additional boring outside, depending on what we find inside, and then we'll come up with a recommendation.
How long will that take?
We start tomorrow, middle of next week, depending on what we find.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, chief.
Mayor.
I appreciate y'all so much, and it hurt my heart that y'all can't go home. I mean, you need, y'all need to home, and it's really hurting me that y'all cannot go home unless they go make a decision for you to go home. I give him some...
Vice mayor, and then Alderman Carver, and then Alderman Vaughn.
Mayor, I'm gonna close out for the night. Just want to say that, as this mayor and board knows, that we are the decision-makers. I mean, we are equipped with information to decide when we accept the certificate of completion. There are a lot of times when we want to do things sooner than we can, but we need to make sure the message is not that we don't want to put them in this building, but we need to make sure that we get it right before we accept this certificate of completion. Everyone's gonna just have to be patient, there are issues there, they need to be resolved. The taxpayers want them resolved, and we want to resolve. This money is not coming from our pockets individually, it is coming collectively from the pockets of the taxpayers. We need to just be patient. This is a business matter, a business decision. We do not need to approve the certificate of completion tonight. Mr. Engineer has said he's gonna get his report to us as soon as we can, and we're gonna see where we go from there. There's no one at this table talking about abandoning the 101 East Lampkin Street. What has been said tonight, we need to get it right. So we just need to just be patient, let's try to get this issue resolved. Let's not try to hurriedly get in this building and get this dedication and get all in an uproar with the balloons flying across the city that would have moved into a building with water flowing everywhere. So let's be patient, be patient. Because if we approve this certificate of completion, that's gonna be one matter, that's gonna be behind us, and given the history of how things happen, we won't visit this again, not in a great way, anyway. So mayor, I'm asking that we be patient. I'm gonna vote for this Mr. Engineer's recommendation, and, because I want to get it right, Mr. Schaefer. I'm gonna vote for it. The only thing I'm asking the board vote for, if they vote for it, then that's gonna be on the board's mind and conscience. I'm with the police department, yes, I said Tupelo, the vice mayor said Tupelo, Mississippi. They have a brand-new building, but the fact we didn't vote for it, we have to make ours right. Make ours right. So that's all we need to do. Tonight, mayor, I recommend that we just approve this recommendation on the engineer. You know, he's, you know, engineer, they got a way to make it happen. I got confidence in this engineer, I believe that he's gonna make this building water-free. I got that trust in you, Mr. Engineer, I'm gonna vote for this twelve hundred dollars tonight now. And as soon as you get that report, you let the mayor know, she may call a special call meeting, who knows? And I tell you what, if I got caught, I'm gonna tell the jury, I got to go improve this building today. I mean, that's how committed I am. So if we can just give this report time to work, and then the mayor has the power under the statute to convene us on three hours' notice. And I tell y'all, I want them to come serve me first, at least within the three hours, mayor, because I'm gonna be here. So we just need to be patient and wait. We need to get this water out of the building, and then we done made it too far. We done made it too far. I mean, we just got to be patient. I mean, this is just experience and wisdom, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to take no unnecessary time, but we gotta be patient. I've seen these situations come and go over this board, over this quarter of a century. Let's be patient. Mr. Engineer, you gonna have the resolution for us? I know you are, I can feel it. You gonna have, you got the resolution for us, okay? Yes, sir, we do it, we got it. And we got money in the budget, Mr. Project Manager, to pay for, because we not even near the end of the budget yet. I'm gonna keep up the figures on it. Mayor, you.
Thank you. Alderman, Carver.
I'm a big fan of letting the pot simmer, especially in local government. We just waited two more weeks for the school board appointment, y'all saw that. You know, in the realities of that, and Mr. Robertson, I'm in the same situation in the house right now, as you're in it too deep to get out, and the reality of that is y'all will occupy this building in the very, very short foreseeable future. Again, I think we need to be hesitant, though, and make sure, I thought the water situation was solved. Obviously, if we can try any and all means to correct it. I think we need to wait a couple more weeks, just the timing with this possible massive rain that's coming. I feel hesitant about the city signing the certificate of substantial completion. So again, I think I'm pretty much saying what the vice mayor's saying, and I also applaud him for... And I also applaud him for, for catching this from the start. And, um, I think it was kind of rushed through, or tried to be rushed through before this, this board was sworn in. I remember anytime in local government, if I start hearing, uh, uh, that we've gotta rush and we've gotta do it, I just kind of step back and realize there's always a reason for that, that you can wait two weeks at any time or a month. We do it all the time, just like tonight with the school board appointment. But, um, I guess my last question is for Mr. Schaefer. Had you known this particular water situation, would you have even recommended this building in the start?
Absolutely.
So either way, from a historical standpoint?
There's, there's, this building still is considerably less expensive than a new building would have been. And so they have a $10 million building up there, but we only had a $5 million budget. So this, I truly believe this is the correct building for the program that we have. When you see the quality of the spaces, when you go through this building, I think the money that was spent and the quality of the project is absolutely first-class. We do have a water mitigation problem. That will have a cost, but once that is taken care of, this building, I believe, is a signature building in the state of Mississippi.
I'll say this, too. Since this has started, a lot of contractors, downtown business owners, um, lease-ors in the downtown, leasees in the downtown area have said almost, if you knew half the water problems we didn't have on 182 and downtown, this is not extravagant. Um, known maybe for the area that, I know in Green Oaks, the whole neighborhood could be replaced. It honestly is that time. So from a capital improvement standpoint, you know, you are, you guys are gonna occupy it, I think, two more weeks. Uh, I'll be happy to make a motion when we get your findings back. If there's something, we could also, if the sump pump ends up, that's the best we can do. At least try to locate maybe another one down there, because it sounds like if you're catching one side, you're not catching the other. I don't know if the floor is not level. But, you know, I'd ask that you do your best, and I know you have, but from a standpoint, just, I mean, it's gotta be the best it can be with what we've got and what we've been given, so, thank you.
I'll take a point of privilege here just for a second. Uh, I have toured this building several times. I did the walkthrough with Sally. I'm not, the woman is the most detailed human being I think I've ever run into in my life, so I didn't, I didn't hang with her for all that long. But this, this building, I, what I want somebody to address real quickly is this, I don't want there to be a sense out there that there's a mold and mildew smell out there. Because I've been in it a couple of times and I've got nothing. Now, I don't have the best sniffer in the world, but we went through the process of taking the sheep rock out, so there's not any mold or mildew down there any longer, so there's nothing down there to mold and mildew. Um, as Gary said, the, the basement is dry right now, is that correct? Okay, so there is a, at least a partial, but this is a beautiful building, and I look forward to it. It is, it has architectural elements to it that are extraordinary. I think everyone, once you get in, is gonna be real, real happy about it. It is, it has some fascinating, uh, features to it that, who knew until we uncovered them to like, to take a look at? It's a building that I think our officers are gonna be very proud of. I think it's gonna be a very functional building. Um, but if we can get this, this water taken care of in such a way as there is never any standing water, it's always either gone or not there in the first place, then I think these gentlemen back here will find it a wonderful home for them. Um, I'm sorry, Alderman Sistruck.
Um, I, I think I have two basic questions, but first I'd like to say that as someone who owned a home here in Starkville with a basement, if you have a basement, you have water issues. I go to a church, that's a hundred and something-year-old building, and there's a crawl space underneath the church, and we have water issues. It, it comes with the territory. The question is, how bad are they and do they create a substantial problem, um, for the, for the building? So I have two, two, three questions. Um, if we authorize you to sign the certificate of substantial completion, and substantial is a key word there to me, um, does that change anything going forward? Do we, do we still have recourse to deal with people with anything that we find, um, was problematic during the renovation, during the construction?
You're up.
Alderman, I can quote you to the provision that controls your very question, and that's non-AFAM contract. Uh, and I wanted to speak on this because I think it's important. It says, "The certificate of substantial completion shall be submitted to the owner and contractor for their written acceptance of responsibilities assigned to each of them in the certificate." That's important to me because I heard today that the certificate is on the mayor's chair. I haven't seen the certificate, so I don't know what those duties and responsibilities are in the final certificate. Mr. Schaefer presented a partial certificate, and I've read that one, but we need to, we need to read this one before we, we go forward. The second sentence says, "Upon such acceptance and consent of surety, if any, the owner shall make payment of retainage applying to such work or designated portion thereof." So that would trigger the city's duty to pay the retainage to weathers upon acceptance of the certificate of substantial completion. The last sentence says, "Such payment shall be adjusted for work that is incomplete or not in accordance with the requirements of the contract documents." And the city would have rights under the contract, under other provisions, to, uh, take issue with any work within the scope of the contract documents that it deems to be insufficient. The issue in my mind right now, Alderman, is that whereas the sump pump was arguably within the scope of the work, this engineering remediation exploratory issue is not in the contract documents. So that would be a separate and distinct issue the city would be dealing with going forward.
Okay. That was one of my questions. Another is, um, if the police department moved in tomorrow morning, does it change in any way what we do next? Um, does it, does it, um, complicate matters in any way with, with what we do next?
No, because it's an unoccupied, it's a unoccupied space, so if the, it's...
Whatever work we, we're going to do, whatever, whether it's under the contract or not.
No one else is down in the basement. The problem's down in the basement.
Okay.
But everyday activities could go on. When you see, that is the finished building. So, I mean, it's there with furniture ready to go, heating, cooling, everything's there. It has a water remediation problem in the basement, but that would not affect, I believe, anybody's everyday activity to use the space. And they wouldn't be down there either, so they might not know for 30 years what was going on in that basement.
And I think my last question is, by allowing the police department to move into the building while we're doing this work, does it in, and I know that y'all are not gonna be able to answer this with absolute certainty, but do we place them in any danger? Are there any health hazards associated with this? Is, is there any reason to delay moving in, um, for that reason? Because what I'm hearing so far otherwise is our city attorney needs to review the, the certificate of substantial completion. Nothing changes with the work determining who pays for what probably doesn't change because the question will be, is it under the contract or is it external to the contract? Um, so, so my, my overriding question, assuming that we dot those i's, cross those t's, are we endangering our police force in any way? Because we love you guys.
Sort of from a construction perspective, you may have, you can put up dust walls and stuff to control any dust that comes through. There may be a little noise in the building depending on what hap, what work occurs in the basement, but other than that, I don't see anything.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Vaughn.
I'm gonna make a motion, Mr. Mayor. We being this dead, I want to make a motion on this, number two.
Okay, Alderman Vaughn, um, did you have some comments you wanted to make?
Well, I went out for a second. What's keeping these guys from moving in this one piece of paper? And, and the city attorney hadn't read it yet?
It wasn't presented until it hit the mayor's chair, when I think we were both sitting at this table.
So, yeah, I understood what he said earlier. So that's really a non-issue until you go read it.
I'd like to read it. We'd like for you to...
And I might have been out, this is my question. Can we make a motion tonight excluding the basement? Let the guys start moving in tomorrow, finish the basement between now and the next meeting?
No, and the contract documents, uh, substantial completion governs the move-in. There are some exceptions for moving in the portions of, of the building. We looked at that for the proposed grand opening before this new board took their seats, and it is problematic, so I would advise against that.
It's all or nothing on this.
Substantial completion, yes, sir.
All right, Alderman Vaughn, something, go ahead.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, to the organization to allow Cloud Pritchard to do number two additional boring, uh, through the floor of the basement. Slight elevation work at the cost of $1,200.
Okay, I have a motion for Alderman Vaughn for authorization to allow Mr. Pritchard to do two borings through the floor.
Second.
And I have a second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, all right, with that being said, I'm assuming that, uh, without the certificate of substantial completion at this point in time for the... Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn, I apologize.
I'd like a motion to remove number three from the agenda.
Okay.
After the work been done by Pritchard.
Yes, sir, okay. All right, we have a motion to remove item number three, which is consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign the certificate of substantial completion, the destruction of Starkville Police Department building renovation, from the, from the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Miller. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
My question is, are we going for the 19th as far as normal scope of work?
Well, we will see what Mr. Pritchard has to provide, and if I can call a special call for, for something in particular that looks like it's relevant and timely or concerns timing, then I'll be happy to do that.
What are you asking, um, to clarify? Just waiting on, are we gonna wait on the sole borings to come back? Or we're gonna wait on him, Chris, to review the...
Both.
We're gonna do both, the same sample?
Yes, we need the sole borings, and then we need the review of the substantial completion documents.
Want to get a report from Mr. Pritchard?
Yes, no, we'll get a report from Mr. Pritchard. As soon as I get it, I'll provide to the board, and if it looks like something that we can move forward with expeditiously, I'll make sure we either call a special call or it'll be in for the next agenda. Okay?
And we do, we do have a meeting on the 15th, um, for, to, to approve the budget. So that's our, our earliest scheduled opportunity, but I, I think all of us agree that if there's, um, information that allows us to get y'all in there before then, we will, we will be here and, and celebrate.
Okay, all right, thank you. What else? All right. Thank you, gentlemen, and Sally. Appreciate y'all for being here.
Mr. Pritchard, depending on you, Mr. Pritchard, depending on you. Thank you, guys.
All right, the last item on the, on the agenda for our, our, um, meeting is, uh, request authorization to approve the resale rate schedule substitution agreement with the TVA effective October 1, 2017. Mr. Kim.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit about on the cover sheet, uh, to make sure you know exactly what our intent was. It may have been, had a few words that may not have been there. TVA recently approved a wholesale rate increase about two, three weeks ago. That by contract through TVA is a push-through to our, I mean, it's increasing our rates on the wholesale side by 2.357%. That's what will be increased October the 1st. According to the agreement, that increase is allowed to push through the rates by kilowatt-hours. So that's how the pass-through would be. So our intent would be to take that rate and push it through to all of our customers, and that would amount to about a 1.3% roughly, uh, increase, uh, in over, in their overall cost. So if you looked at 1,000 kilowatt-hours or, or average, that may be a dollar and 30 cents per month, something to that effect. The other part of what we're asking for on our side, and both of these requests do not provide the Starkville, the city of Starkville, any additional revenue. So all of the dollars that we just talked about flows back to TVA to pay the wholesale rate. The other adjustment that I'm requesting would be to adjust on the retail side, on the, on the residential, go up $1 on the customer charge and decrease the kilowatt-hour charges to offset all of that. So at the end of the day, there's zero, this is kind of a revenue neutral. And what that does, by our cost of service, which we kind of look in our classes, it, it correctly shifts the cost to basically the real low-end users on that, which is where the equipment is. And so for most customers, you would see, it's almost negligible across the board. It doesn't really amount to anything, but you might see a fraction of pennies that you'd look at over a year's time. So it's almost a wash. But I do think it positions us correctly as the way our cost of service would be. So that's, that's what I was asking for.
Thank you. Any question, Mr. Vaughn?
I'll make a motion.
Sir?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, all right.
Request authorization to approve the resale, resale rate schedule substitution agreement with TVA elect on October 1, 2017.
All right, thank you, Alderman Vaughn. I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of five to one, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. All right, that ends our open session. We will, uh, now entertain a motion to go in.
We're going to close session.
Thank you. I have a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
I have a second, Alderman Miller, was it you? Okay, I have a second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The board will be going into closed determination to determine, excuse me, the need to go into